To begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask our Board, our Student Board Member, for the Pledge of Allegiance as well as Values, Mission, and Vision.
Please place the clock, put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Before we get started with an approval of the agenda.
their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex change in world.
Before we get started with the approval of the agenda, one thing I'd like to do is stay abreast of some of the things that are going on in the educational world. I'll be very brief, but I just wanted to share some things that many of you might be aware of and might be of interest to you. COVID, at this point, they're saying that if you are asymptomatic and you feel well, that it is permissible to come to school. Of course, that's at your discretion, and that is according to what each family would like to do, but that is permissible at this point. I also want to say that it's interesting that cursive is making a comeback. So it's been in the news, and a lot of educators know this. Some are not happy about it, some are. And in the grades, I believe, first through sixth, the California Legislature has decided that it is something that should be welcomed back, and so we will leave it to our educators to handle this legislation, but it's just an interesting turn of events. With that, I'm wondering if I can get a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
But I'm sorry, hold on a second.
I will approve the, I'm gonna second the motion.
I'll just make the friendly amendment to pull item 14F.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A report of closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. This evening, there was no action taken in closed session.
Okay, we have the Teacher-Student Spotlight, BBMS Bulldog Aid Wellness Center, Kristin
At the top of the evening, esteemed board, I'm just here for eye candy and to protect It's good to see everyone. We hope that you guys are getting off to a great new year. And with that, I give you Ms. Kristin Hartley.
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me through my mask. I sound pretty good, though, right? Okay, good. So I just kind of wanted to come by. Obviously, thank you so much for the spotlight, but I did want to just prepare some updates on how Bulldog Aid is going, and to do that, I've just kind of listed off some of the achievements that we've made so far since Bulldog Aid opened in November. So first, our Wellness Wednesday programming is up and running. So Wellness Wednesday is a program that we run through the advisory period for students and the lunchtime period for our staff members. Some of the examples of what we've been doing so far for Wellness Wednesday is we had a self-care journaling and gua sha workshop, which if you don't know what gua sha is, it's like facial massage for self-care. We had our puppy party and our de-stress event. We've done vision boards. Next week, we're going to be doing do-it-yourself essential oil rollers, mindful coloring sensory bracelets, and then we've also been supporting the BVPTA Wellness Month. We've also been rolling out some of our classroom guidance, actually just today and next, through next week as well. We have NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, coming in and doing presentations for our seventh-grade health classes. They're ending the silence presentations. Digital citizenship, making friends and taking responsibility are just some of the examples of classroom guidance lessons that we've done. As far as Maple Center, we just onboarded four new counselors, which is really great because we had a waitlist of students that really needed to be seen, and so now we can go through that waitlist and accept more students. Right now, we currently have 31 students receiving ongoing mental health support through our Maple Center program. We are going to be introducing some spring counseling groups, an impulse control group, executive functioning, and a girls' group, because girls love groups. And then, we are going to be working together with Maple Center to plan some classroom guidance lessons as well. They have some ideas of things that they want to push into the classrooms to teach our kids, so we're really excited about that. And then lastly, our traffic, just general traffic so far this year. Again, we've been open since November 8th, so realistically, that's about eight weeks, and we've had over 750 visitors to the Wellness Center. Before we get started with an approval of the agenda. Oh, sorry.
And values, sorry, are as follows. Our mission is educational excellence and the vision is that our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you, Sophia. Before we get started with the approval of the agenda, one thing I'd like to do is stay abreast of some of the things that are going on in the educational world. I'll be very brief, but I just wanted to share some things that many of you might be aware of and might be of interest to you. COVID at this point, they're saying that if you are asymptomatic and you feel well, that it is permissible to come to school. Of course, that's at your discretion and that is according to what each family would like to do, but that is permissible at this point. I also want to say that it's interesting that cursive is making a comeback. So it's been in the news and a lot of educators know this. Some are not happy about it, some are. And in the grades, I believe, first through sixth, the California legislator has decided that it is something that should be welcomed back. And so we will leave it to our educators to handle this legislation, but it's just an interesting turn of events. With that, I'm wondering if I can get a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
But I, sorry, hold on a second. Minus item 14F.
I will approve the, I'm gonna second the motion.
I'll just make the friendly amendment to pull item 14F.
Okay, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda approved. A report of closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. This evening, there was no action taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We have the Teacher-Student Spotlight. BBMS Bulldog Aid Wellness Center, Kristin Hartley and Rich Waters. All right.
Introduce you. At top of the evening, esteemed board, I'm just here for eye candy and to protect Kristin. It's good to see everyone. We hope that you guys are getting off to a great new year. And with that, I give you Ms. Kristin Hartley.
Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me through my mask. I sound pretty good, though, right? Okay, good. So I just kind of wanted to come by. Obviously, thank you so much for the spotlight, but I did want to just prepare some updates on how Bulldog Aid is going. And to do that, I've just kind of listed off some of the achievements that we've made so far since Bulldog Aid opened in November. So first, our Wellness Wednesday programming is up and running. So Wellness Wednesday is a program that we run through the advisory period for students and the lunchtime period for our staff members. Some of the examples of what we've been doing so far for Wellness Wednesday is we had a self-care journaling and gua sha workshop, which if you don't know what gua sha is, it's like facial massage for self-care. We had our puppy party and our de-stress event. We've done vision boards. Next week, we're going to be doing do-it-yourself essential oil rollers, mindful coloring, sensory bracelets, and then we've also been supporting the BVPTA Wellness Month. We've also been rolling out some of our classroom guidance, actually just today and next, through next week as well. We have NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, coming in and doing presentations for our seventh grade health classes. They're ending the silence presentations. Digital citizenship, making friends and taking responsibility are just some of the examples of classroom guidance lessons that we've done. As far as Maple Center, we just onboarded four new counselors, which is really great because we had a waitlist of students that really needed to be seen, and so now we can go through that waitlist and accept more students. Right now, we currently have 31 students receiving ongoing mental health support through our Maple Center program. We are going to be introducing some spring counseling groups, an impulse control group, executive functioning, and a girls' group, because girls love groups. And then we are, we are going to be working together with Maple Center to plan some classroom guidance lessons as well. They have some ideas of things that they want to push into the classrooms to teach our kids, so we're really excited about that. And then lastly, our traffic, just general traffic so far this year. Again, we've been open since November 8th, so realistically, that's about eight weeks, and we've had over 750 visitors to the Wellness Center. I'm still working on digitizing our sign-ins, but right now, we're at over 750 students in that eight-week period, so that's really exciting. I thought it important to mention, because I think one of the things that we had discussed a little bit as a group when kind of coming and planning together these wellness events is a lot of times when we think of wellness, we think of, a lot of females like to participate in wellness, right? Gua sha, facial massage, journaling. And one of the things I thought was really important to mention is most of our representation within the Wellness Center, so the kids who are actually signing in and using the space, are actually mostly males. So it's been really, really kind of refreshing to see a lot of our male identifying students coming in and using the Wellness Center, making themselves a cup of tea. It's all very cute. So yes, and I put in here, kids are loving tea, the gigantic bean bags, and the kinetic sand. So we're having a lot of fun in the Wellness Center. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions or comments.
If I may, I just want to thank the board for your direction and support. We could not do this without you guys, and it's been a program, we feel globally as an admin team, is really successful and it's really helped reduce anxiety and some of the other issues we were seeing prior to the Wellness Center being there. Our counselors headed by Ms. Hartley are amazing and they're just doing really good work, and it adds another level of support that we feel is really needed. So thank you for that.
Yeah. I want to, I want to kind of second that, too, because I feel like our accomplishments so far this year are your accomplishments so far this year in the Wellness Center. I wouldn't have been able to do it without you guys, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hartley and Mr. Waters. And that's really astounding that there were 750 walk-ins in an eight-week period. So that's, it's really impressive and also that there was a waiting list, and now that that waiting list, of course, is cared for, because a lot of people who work in the schools are getting phone calls. I do at least once a week, saying, what can I do? I want my kid to have counseling. Kaiser's taking six weeks. I mean, this is a regular occurrence, so to have the luxury of some support at our schools at the middle school level is absolutely essential, and I am very grateful. Board members, any comments or thoughts, starting with Sophia?
Thank you, Ms. Hartley, for the presentation. I thought the note about the demographics that you've been seeing so far at the center was really interesting and insightful. I was curious as to what hours the programs like the gua sha and the journaling programs are made available to the kids. Sorry, sorry about that.
That's okay. I don't want to yell, so it's just easier. So what hours do we run the program?
Yeah.
Okay, so on Wednesdays, typically, like next week, for example, we have advisor on Tuesday, but that's the whole thing. So on Wednesdays, we run the advisory hour. I think it's 11:30 to 12, 11:40 to 12:30-ish for the students, so they can, it's by sign-up, because oftentimes with the Wellness Wednesdays, we have supplies that we need to buy, so we limit the number for some of the activities. But they sign up, they come, they participate during that, like 11:40 to 12:30-ish. And then we invite our staff members to also come participate in the same activities and the workshops, and that's at lunchtime, so like 12:30 to 1:10.
Awesome, thank you so much.
When is the seaweed wrap again?
The seaweed wrap? What else? I know, the lap of luxury. When's our spa opening? I don't know. I'll ask you. Mr. Margot, when's our spa opening?
And board member, spa day.
Right? Yes. And I'm invited, right?
Of course, always.
You're running it. Well, I'd like to thank you for really just hitting the ground running. You were already doing, hitting the ground running before, and so I appreciate that you're just, you know, there was no hesitation whatsoever in putting this programming into place. Most importantly, I really appreciate having the feedback from you and getting this report and hearing how it's going, and I hope you come back often to report back to us. It's really nice to hear.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for joining us. I'm curious to know, so you have these drop-ins. What are you experiencing in terms of appointments and how, how are the kids making appointments? How are those needs met? So this feels like it's something where it's a safe space and it really draws the kids in, so that then maybe you can strike conversation with them. Are you finding that this does lead them to come to you to ask for more personal support?
Yeah, I think that we have been really fortunate in that we have a really strong, I would say, mental health support system on our campus through me, through our counseling staff, through our Maple Center staff, and so, and yeah, so our LMFT Julie, who's also in the Wellness Center with us. And so I think we're really fortunate in that the kids trust a lot of those people. And so it's not often me, but to answer your question, yes, we are finding that a lot of students are developing their comfort level with the Wellness Center and then kind of coming forward and saying, okay, this isn't so scary, this isn't so bad. I would really like to talk to someone. I actually just spoke with Julie, our LMFT, this morning about that exact situation. We had a student who was really hesitant, but kind of was testing the waters with getting help, and then just more time in the Wellness Center, she approached our LMFT and was like, I think I'm ready. So we are seeing that. And so as far as like those appointments go, again, we're really fortunate. The kids feel comfortable talking to me, they feel comfortable talking to Julie or their school counselors in order for us to kind of all connect and make sure whatever that kid needs that they're getting set up with. It's been really great.
Wishing you a easy and safe delivery.
Oh, thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for everything that's going on. I have to tell you, getting off the, running on the ground as you have been doing, I'm the representative of the liaison to the Health and Safety Commission, and it gave me a great deal of pleasure to report what you're doing there, and they really loved it. And I, I think you left out a couple of activities that I thought were rather, you're having a dodgeball, did you mention the dodgeball tournament?
Oh.
And the sit-up contest, and the, what was the other one? The sit-up contest, the basketball layup contest?
Yes.
And I don't know, and there was one more you were doing, and I don't know what that was. Bean boop or boop beat? What was it?
It's called the beat test. It's, it's a really fun but very challenging physical, physical activity test.
Well, I have to tell you, the, the Health and Safety Commission really loved to see that it's up and running and they took a great deal of interest. One more thing I want to say is that with these activities that you're doing, the fun one activities, the kids are beginning to experience the thought of being there and doing things that are part of the program and learning just exactly who you are. And so I really, those will be very, very good for the kids, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I don't recommend you personally do the dodgeball or the sit-ups.
I was gonna say, I'm not personally doing any dodgeballing or sitting up.
Okay. And when is the puppy party?
Well, we had the puppy party in December, and my plan, my goal is to kind of hover the puppy party around finals. So in the springtime, it would be end of May-ish for our second puppy party.
We won't invite Hudson to the next one.
Just gonna say, I do have somebody that would like to come to that.
Has he been fingerprinted and TV test?
Yes.
Board members are invited to the puppy party, should you feel like you want to attend.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Can I also just jump in, because you've been a lot of fun to plan with, and you know, we've asked, this is a big challenge to put on you, because the idea that, that we had about like removing the stigma about kids coming in and, and mental health and getting services has been moved now from the high school to you. And the benefit, of course, we know, is that, you know, that students know that these services are available now, six through 12. But hearing these reports, talking to kids, talking to parents, you know, providing this opportunity for sixth grade where people are wanting to come in, advocating for themselves, this is what we've talked about with middle school and our adolescent group, which is such a tough group, knowing that, I can't imagine not having you there, you know, during the first couple of years. But just getting that feedback from parents, for me, that's the best feedback that I can get, and just thank you for being flexible and, and fun and providing this, this, this buy-in for everyone to be part of it, and you've allowed that.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing that, too, because I don't often get the opportunity to hear what the community is thinking and feeling.
I do.
So I appreciate that. I know you do, and I.
Happy to pass that on.
I appreciate you sharing good news only to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, that brings us to the agenda hearing period, public comment. I don't believe there's any public comment. Okay, that brings us to, may I get a motion for the approval of the consent calendar?
Was anything being pulled?
No one.
Anybody pulling anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Approval seconded by Ms. Marcus and a motion made by Mr. Margot. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, motion carries. This takes us to student board member report.
Okay. Oh, December 19th. Okay, we're gonna ignore that that says December 19th, because it's definitely January 23rd today. I'll use that as an excuse to say hopefully your guys last happy new year. This is the first open session of the year, so. It's been picking up so far back in the district. The first thing I wanted to show here was some photos from our past week's NWEA testing and AP info sessions. I wanted to start off today's presentation with these, because these are both such great examples, I think, of all the opportunities that our kids have in the district. So here, like they were being assessed for some standard curriculum stuff, and then in the AP info testing session, or sorry, in the AP info sessions, they got presentations from a ton of our AP and elective teachers on the pathway options and elective options in AP classes that they have available, so that, to help them plan out their, their pathways in the high schools from freshman year onwards. And this really just reminds me of how many opportunities, especially in light of Ms. Hartley's presentation, that our kids have in this district. Every, I think every day, if not more than that, I hear someone or think to myself how lucky we are to have so many class options, and I hear people say all the time, I wish I had that. Like, these sessions are so valuable and connecting the teachers to the students in this way beforehand, really giving them that structure to plan out their education and tailoring it to their own interests and desires is so valuable. So that's just something I wanted to highlight here. Yeah. Next up, this was a student city-related event from the weekend before last. Students from the Interact Club, which is the high school's Rotary Connection Club, as well as Rotary members themselves met up to, for a volunteer opportunity at Project Angel Food, where we packaged meals for bedridden and other sick people confined to their homes. This was such a fun opportunity for both students and community members alike to work together for, on a project like this, and it will be becoming a regular thing now, too. I think at least once a month, so for anyone who wants to join, on Saturday mornings, and now afternoon sometimes, we'll be meeting up at Project Angel Food to help package up some lunches. I'm sure you already all know, but if not, this week, Dance Company is having their annual performance at the Wallace Annenberg on Wednesday and Thursday. This performance has to be one of, if not my favorite performing arts events every year, and I'm so excited to go see it and encourage everyone in the audience and watching to go see it themselves. Again, this will be on Wednesday and Thursday at the Wallace Annenberg. And then, we're keeping it pretty short, but wrapping up with some upcoming events. On January 26th, on Friday, we will be, students at the high school will have the opportunity to hear a Holocaust survivor speak, as well as a related project put on by ASB in association with the Butterfly Project, where they will be able to color wooden butterflies in remembrance of the children that died in the Holocaust. So that will be a great learning opportunity for students. And then followed later this, next month, we will have our winter formal dance hosted at the Peterson Automotive Museum, where the entire floor of cars will be on display for students to see during the dance, which will be very cool, hopefully. And that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments, starting with Mr. Margot, Ms. Wells.
Nice to see you and nice report. Thank you.
Thank you, great report.
Always enjoy this time. Thank you for your report.
Thank you for your report, and wanted to ask you personally, which APs are you taking currently, if any?
Oh, this year, I am taking, oh my gosh, I'm taking, in order of my class schedule, I'm taking AP Literature, AP 2D Studio Art and Design, not ASB, but I'll count this as AP-level work.
For sure.
Yeah. Period four is AP Comparative Government, period five is AP Government and Honors Economics, and period six is AP Statistics.
And this is AP Civics?
Yes, this is AP Civics. Yes.
That's true.
Excellent. So that's, that's pretty rigorous. How many, if you don't mind me asking, how many hours of homework would you say you have a night, or I should say, studying per week?
Studying per week? That is such a funny figure to think about. I think you, when you have a lot of courses like this, there's definitely an emphasis on getting as much as you can done in class and during school hours. But outside, it's hard to quantify, it's kind of a, it's kind of a week-round, day-round thing.
Yeah.
But yeah.
All right, very good. Well, I applaud that. That's a lot of APs, but I know you're up for it, so. Thank you very much. With that, the superintendent report.
Great, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Take just a second to transition over here. I also want to just begin by offering the happiest of New Year to all of you and to our staff and to our community. We have reorganized, so we are, many of us in different places up here this evening, and so we're excited after a great organizational meeting in December to kick off our new year. We are 11 days into our second semester, and we're off to a really strong start. Want to start with some exciting news. We have two winners among our cabinet team for the AXA Region 14 Cabinet Members of the Year, Dr. Horvath for the Assistant Superintendent of Personal Services, and also Mr. Dustin Seaman, Assistant Superintendent for Education Services, and this fits right into our strategic plan. And so congratulations. Recognizing the work that we are doing in our district is really important, and we are right out of the gate this year with, with two awards, two nominations, and it helps us moving strong into the new year, and this goes for all of our staff. Those opportunities are out there, we're doing some great work, and this is just evidence of that. So each year, I've been able to provide more information to you about International Holocaust Remembrance Day, which is on January 27th. And each year, I'm able to share with you how we're embedding a lot of the work and recognition into our curriculum and working with our students. And Ms. Lifson talked about this a little bit, as far as what's happening at the high school. And the high schools actually had two, this will be the second Holocaust survivor speaker that's coming. And I'm really proud to say, too, and if you remember, it was Hawthorne that first came and they, they're the ones that, that shared about the Butterfly Project and, and just how interested we were in that. And, and I'm proud to say that all of our schools are now involved in the Butterfly Project, and, and that truly is something that kids can understand and kids can really be part of, and you can do that multi-grade level, and so we are doing that, elementary, middle, and high school. So super excited about that as well. And it's not only participating in speakers and also, you know, physically being involved, doing something tangible to engage yourself, but it's also displaying your work. As teachers, we know how important it is to take our student work and to also display it, and so that's going to be happening as well at each of our, our schools. So at BVMS, as I mentioned, they are taking on the project and they're going to be doing this lunch. There's going to be parent volunteers that are actually coming in and assisting with the project and assisting with students, and so we're really excited about that, and I'm going to be really glad to be able to show you the results. So I'm going to take some pictures afterwards when I'm visiting schools and show you a more collaborative. and show you a more collaboration to the Butterfly Project. So at Hawthorne, we are continuing to move along at Hawthorne with some additional items that are new for this year. And so not only are they involved in the Butterfly Project, but they're also doing some, fifth graders went to the Holocaust Museum and so they've been able to take that experience. And they've also been reading Number the Stars, which has been highly recommended as reading for fifth grade. And so I feel like we're really moving in a real positive direction for our kids and our community. And then here's just some work already that is happening at Horace Mann with the memorial making through the Butterfly Project. And so they have really embraced this project. And if you remember, last year, we took some pictures and it's up and it's everywhere in the hallways. And it's something that they've really embraced. And we're really excited about the work that we're doing in all of our schools. What I'm most excited about is just some of the new relationships that we have. And so from board members to community members, they've really reached out at this time, especially over the last several months, where it's been a real dark time for us in our community and really started to form some relationships. So I talked about before in a superintendent's report, the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles and the Shine the Light Against Anti-Semitism. And this is an organization that has really pulled in administrators so that they could provide resources and training and conversations. And so that has started a really solid relationship with them. And so we are continuing to work with them, get the resources, review the programs out there. And we know that that's just not enough. We really wanted to partner and I'm so glad the community has really reached out. I feel like we, resources are coming in kind of everywhere. And if I haven't returned an email or a phone call, it's just we have so many people that are reaching out to us. It's a good problem to have. But we have started a collaboration with, this is an acronym. It's the Israel-American Council, so it's OFEK. And so this is not only an organization that's helping us in reaching out for teacher training, but also connecting us with resources that will be available for our students. And it's really gonna be setting up conversations about whether it's a field trip or whether it's a visit to the Museum of Tolerance and just those teaching resources that are appropriate for each grade level so that our staff doesn't, so they don't feel like they have to recreate. This has been done and it's been proven and it's been successful. And we're doing a lot of sharing. And we can't do that without having the partners in place. And we just have so many resources and programs to look at and we're just very blessed that we have so many people that are looking out for us. I know in my additional reports, I will share some additional information as far as the teacher training that we're going to have, as well as some of the resources that we're going to be selecting. Kind of going back to December and even prior to that, we've had a couple of study sessions with the board just about early childhood education and what does that look like when it comes to our preschool programming. We have, we're at a place, we had lots of options to look at with the opening of El Rodeo that's coming up. And through our second study session that we have with the board, we know that the preschool program, we're going to be offering a section of the preschool, the city-run preschool at Horace Mann, along with our special education section of preschool at Horace Mann. And that will be new for next year. We're also going to be having a section, at least one, at Hawthorne for next year. And so we're excited to be able to, with our transfer of students and staff to El Rodeo, that we have a opportunity in front of us. In fact, it's kind of a once-in-a-generation opportunity that we have an entire school. And to have Hawthorne to be able to look at what kind of programming, what type of partnership can we do with our city? How do we create an early childhood center? So, you know, we used the Hero Center from our Hawthorne Heroes and, you know, this is something we've been talking about for years. It's now time to work with our city, which is something that we're going to be doing this week on the 26th. And that is to start to have the conversation about what are the community needs? What can we do to create, working together through a collaboration, a childhood, early childhood center that could potentially be from zero to four? And so the possibilities are endless. Certainly, there's some other things that we're looking at. We have hired an architect to look at space for district offices. We've looked at what kind of additional programming can we have there? You know, this doesn't happen often in a school district that you have so much space that you can begin to dream and you can begin to create programs. The idea here, working with the city, is to, you know, create a really special place that people want to move here because we've branded an early childhood center that's great for kids, that is aligned into the academics and social experiences that we have in our school district. And this is a really rare opportunity to do that. I'm really thankful to our Board of Education and to our staff, cabinet, just the relationship that we've built with the city because that's what's opening the doors to these conversations about what could be. And we're literally building this from the ground up. And so this is not something that we take lightly and it's going to be something we worked with the city and also worked with residents because we really want to make sure that the needs of the community are fully incorporated into what this is going to look like. So we're just super excited about it. It just, again, it doesn't happen a lot in education that you have this opportunity to kind of design and build and then implement. So we're all very excited. Just really quickly, I really love when we have our middle school nights. You know, we're building our athletic program and continuing to do so at the middle school. But there's always something really special. And thank you to Mr. Ellis for your leadership in this area. But it's, you can just feel the energy walking in. So the middle school night last week, we played Inglewood. Our boys won. Just, you can just feel it, the energy. And we had a great showing and it was so great to see our kids and to see, you know, cheerleaders out there, like, middle school. Like, this is, you know, something very exciting. You know, our kids are getting really excited about coming to the high school. We've talked a lot about the strategic plan and I won't go into a lot of detail, but I just want you to look at this visual because this is, you know, a lot of work has gone into our strategic plan. And it's really, you know, it's evolved over time and it's really turned out to be a document that really helps move us and also holds us accountable for student learning. And so we are already, and it's just a little scary when you look at this, to see where we are in this process. And what's so significant about this January is that, you know, and I was just talking about this earlier with some people about, you know, we've asked our staff to do a lot. And from an assessment perspective, you know, we've, we've really turned things around and I'm really thankful and grateful for the staff for really getting engaged into this process. I have to tell you that, you know, when you start and you have conversations with teachers about student learning and about student growth and progress, you know, that's where you're able to see this come through at a meeting like this, where, you know, we started to do some assessments in the beginning of the year and now we're at that mid-year. So it's, we are at a point where we're going to see that growth. And I will say that I try to do this as often as possible and I need to do a better job, quite frankly. But two of the best days that I spent so far this year was a day at Horace Mann and also at Beverly Vista Middle School in your grade-level meetings in the Horace Mann data chat for fifth grade. It was just, it was a moving experience for me as an educator to be among teachers and administration going one by one and talking about the student growth, the student progress, whether that student, that there was growth from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, which is now, or if there was a student that didn't have any growth and why. And it's not just an academic push or check-in. It's really about that social-emotional piece and how well is that student? And is that student connected to an adult? And it really does embrace the whole child. To have that experience, sitting with a fifth-grade team that has bought all in to helping each other and reflect on their practices and collaborate, it was, it's just moving when I left. I mean, it just, that's exactly where we want our teachers to be and they're there. And just to be part of that was very exciting and I'm just happy to pass that on. So coming up next week is really a big meeting for us because, you know, we will be sharing that data with you, which is going to be new, our NWEA data. So we'll have a great conversation and we're very excited to be able to share that with you. And just a heads up for everybody, sometimes this, people aren't following the agenda, so to speak, but really tune in if you're listening now. You know, we are really at an exciting place right now with our construction and our projects. You know, it's so exciting to still walk into El Rodeo, even when you're doing, you know, punch list items. We just get so excited to be able to walk in there every week. And we want to be able to share with you just that update with pictures for El Rodeo and also the high school B3, B4. And we're going to be able to do that at the next meeting. So February 13th is the next regularly scheduled meeting. And so we do ask that everybody tune in because seeing these projects get closer and closer is very exciting and we can't wait to share that with you. We also have a very exciting time. Mike Matos is one of the most sought-after keynote speakers for PLCs. And so we have an entire day planned, just starting at the high school. And then we're also going to do a very, very soft opening at El Rodeo for our keynote speaker because we need that space. And so we're going to be able to have our staff be able to attend the Professional Development Day keynote speaker with Mr. Matos. And we'll have that there at El Rodeo. So we're very excited to be able to have him there and be present. And we have a full day planned as we then move back to the high school and will be fully engaged the entire day. And we're really gonna take advantage of that Professional Development Day. And that is it. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bregge. I want to say that I'm feeling that I've gleaned from everything that you've reported and things are going on that were really, there's a buzz among the school district and things are going quite well. And I don't want to jinx anything, but I just feel that there's an excitement and a pulse and a buzz. And I'm very happy to hear that. I really am. On a more sad note, of course, thank you for bringing up the International Holocaust Remembrance Day. It is unfortunate that there has to be in a calendar, an official day planned for remembering because that indicates to me that we, as humans, need to be reminded of some of the most atrocious things that have happened. And for that reason, I would like to also say, of course, and this is by no means the only sort of Holocaust that I'm aware of, but, you know, Rwandan, in Rwanda, Armenian genocide. And these things have happened throughout our history and it just reminds us that civilization is really, is just, it's a fragile crust civility and that, you know, the days that I lived my life in which I have relative peace, I'm very grateful. And I realize that not too far away on this globe, there are some horrific things that people are experiencing. And I think that is it. We can go around with further comments. Sophia?
Well, thank you for the report, Dr. Bregge. And the point about the construction updates being made more available to the public, I was, that reminded me about the town hall mentioned last semester. And I was just curious. I want to follow up on that and, yeah, ask if that ever happened and how it went.
So I thought that it went well. I thought that that was one, that was one way to do this. What I would like to see as we move forward and something that we'll talk about as a cabinet is, and I kind of had this kind of offshoot conversation with Mrs. Manichari earlier that it's, you know, getting people, getting this in the hands of people. So, you know, and it may be even more of, you know, through some of the PTA meetings. And so, because it does surprise me sometimes when people will say that, like, "Look, I didn't know you were getting like an Olympic-sized pool outside." And, you know, and while that's exciting, you know, we've been talking about it for a long time. I think that this is evident that we need to do what we can to share because this is such exciting news. And I will take responsibility for that, that we need to do a better job because we're at a place now where it's not this, you know, kind of, sorta, this is what it's like, like we know, like we're there. So this is the time to really bring people in and update them. And I think people will be really interested now because with the pictures, it's, you can see that light at the end of the tunnel. Whereas before, it's just a construction site and there are no walls. And so we're at a point now where we just need to do a little bit more than what we've done before to find those avenues to get this information into the right hands.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Wells?
Well, all very exciting things. First, I'd like to say regarding the Early Education Center, I'm very excited about that and that we're moving that forward. I do, we just want to reemphasize how important it will be for us to get feedback from the community and that's one of the pieces that we always talk about. So I want people to know that we really do want to have feedback from the community as this, as these discussions move forward. That's just very exciting. And for El Rodeo and the construction program, I mean, I'm just so pleased about everything that's happening. And it's just, we're in such good hands and everything is moving along so well. It's very exciting about El Rodeo. I've asked before, but I really think it would be important for us at calendar or time to really talk about how we're opening El Rodeo for the public to see, for alumni to see, and for people to really be able to come and participate in the opening of El Rodeo so that it doesn't just kind of slip by quietly. I think it will be really important for people to really communicate that, advertise that and let people know what our plans are for El Rodeo and opening it. I know you wanted to wait till after the new year, but now we're here. So that would just be really important, I think, for everyone. Everyone has really contributed to this in so many different ways for this to happen. So it will be important for everyone to share and the, you know, the results because it's just been such a labor of love, really, in so many ways. And for the high school, that's just exciting news. So it's all coming together. And I agree, we should have more regular town halls for people to be able to come and provide their comments because the information's there. When we meet with the CBOC and the other groups, we see it and it's on the website and it's all out there. So the more kind of meetings we can set, like a town hall meeting, it just gives people an opportunity to focus to, you know, have a meeting or an event they have to show up for. And then that gives everyone an opportunity to talk about it because it's great things to talk about.
And thank you for that. We'll have some more information, too. One of the key pieces for us as far as our opening, we spent a great deal of time on, because that's so important to be able to do that right, is knowing what that first day of school is. That holds a big key to us for kind of the unveiling of what, you know, how this is gonna, you know, how we do the opening, when we do the opening, who's invited. So that, so I think we're there. So we're right at a point now that we're gonna be able to share that information.
Michael, thank you for your presentation. I think that you really hit on a lot of the notes that are question marks for the families and I really appreciate it. In regards to Holocaust Remembrance Day, that's beautiful that you're having it at this time of year, which is the international moment for it. And that, you know, the students at every level will have some exposure. As for the Early Childhood Development Center, that's great to know that there will be classes at both Horace Mann and Hawthorne. I know that the city held an open house last week and a lot of the families were very anxious to know, will there be at Hawthorne? You know, and so I actually think that this end result is the best for our community because it means that all BHUSD families can feed into BHUSD via the city program. And I'm really glad about that. I think it'll be good for traffic and community building that there's classes at all the schools. So thank you for that. It's very. So thank you for that. It's very exciting. And even maybe, you know, the current fifth graders can stop by El Rodeo for a pretend first day of school since they'll never have a chance to go there. And maybe they can give you a real feel of what that might look like, something like that.
Love that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Dr. Bregge. I would like to just mention that I am thrilled to see that the high school's going to get a visitation from a, for a Holocaust survivor who happens to be Mahal's mother-in-law. But so, and I think everybody should make an attempt to see it. And I'd like to thank the JFL for their continuous support of seeing that this does and for our students and for our school. I think this has been the biggest observation of the Holocaust since I've been associated with the school district. And I can't thank you and your work to get this to happen at, at all levels. And one little thing I was thinking about is that all these kids that are going to be making their butterflies, they're going to leave them up around the school and it's going to be a constant reminder to them about the Holocaust, which I think is something that will stick with them for a while. So I am, I am thrilled and the, the resources that they're providing and, and the, the helping the teachers to have lessons and so on. I just think we're really on, on track with that. As far as the, I remember when Horace Mann opened up, there was a great big invitation to everybody to come and see it. And I'm sure that you're going to be doing the same thing with El Rodeo. I have to tell you, as you know, I frequently have breakfast with some of the former El Rodeo teachers and they keep asking me, are we going to be invited? And I hope that that will be the case. I know it will be.
It's part of the plan.
Huh?
It's part of the plan.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. They will be glad. They'll think I had something to do with it, so don't tell them. And again, I want to congratulate Dr. Horvath and Mr. Seaman on their awards. I thought that was wonderful and I look forward because that was really, that really shows that you stand out in, in the community. Other than that, I think that I will wait until my other for the thing. So thank you. Thank you again for a very comprehensive report. Oh, by the way, I'm glad that the situation with the early childhood and where the kids are going to be going to school has been settled. And that really makes me feel comfortable and I like the plan that was, was instituted. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, an education services update.
Good evening, Board of Education. First and foremost, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to just come up. This presentation is more of an FYI and not as an action item. It's more of a, an opportunity for us to just kind of regroup and catch you up on what's happening within the Education Services Department here in BHUSD. So just kind of jumping off first, one of the things that our department has been working on for numerous years, this isn't something that is a new conversation. We have been looking at the way that we have been intervening with students in grades six through 12th since Dr. Bregge came in eight years ago, to myself and, you know, other cabinet members, seven to six years ago. We were constantly looking at what are some of the issues that our students face. You know that through our test scores and multiple data points, you know, our students that score well typically fare well during the school day. We have worked really hard on our special education programs, our 504 implementations. And so a lot of our concern within our strategic plan consistently goes back to, and I always call that B C student. Maybe that student that isn't always going to raise their hand, maybe kind of avoids, you know, that self-advocacy piece will kind of float at the back of the classroom. And we have been monitoring that data around those students, that really middle band of students. And what types of interventions, what types of supports can we provide for those students? And so going through and looking and making sure that the right people are on the bus. We're, we're at that point in our history, I guess I will say, that we are excited to be able to launch the Avid program. What is Avid? It's advancement via individual determination. So the student that we just described to you is the perfect candidate for this program. This program isn't for all students. What we have done in past is we've kind of cobbled together small intervention pieces, such as study hall or, you know, some mentoring, which has been very successful for some. But we are still lacking some of that push for that connection between what sixth grade feels like, if I'm earning a B or a C grade, to what it translates to a post-secondary option. Isolated conversations, that cohort feel, that family feel, that mentor feel. And allowing those cohorts of students that are identified and offered this opportunity to be able to stay together from sixth to 12th grade. Looking at first generation students to the American school system. Helping them find that connection amongst their peers, but also staying with people, adults, that trusted adult with them throughout this whole process. And so truly, the Avid program, it, it, it's funny for me to stand up at the, at the mic and say something could be cost neutral to you guys. Usually I'm coming to ask for funds. It is a reallocation of funds. So these funds are already earmarked within our educational services budget, whether that be through Title I, which is the prime, prime opportunity for us to utilize our Title I funds for targeted data-driven intervention processes. Others is some of the professional development training will come through our Educators Effectiveness Grant. So one of the questions which I'll bring to the Board of Education then for approval will be a lump sum over three-year time PD plan for this program. What will be approved utilizing the Title I, Title III, and some of our educator effectiveness funds, which are all grant-based, both federally and statewide. So what is the program itself? What we hope to do is be able to slowly roll this out. Because the point behind any sort of pilot to be effective is to make sure that our community understands what the pilot is, making sure that our teachers are thoroughly trained, our administration can support. The great part is, is myself, Mr. Stewart and Dr. Scott have all come from Avid districts. So we have previous experience. And those that we're working towards possibly recruiting will be doing an all-call to our staff. We're looking for those that have had previous experience as well. So they can bring that previous experience into our program here. We hope to be able to work with our fifth grade and our eighth grade teams to start identifying students. We already have students on our watch list that we will then invite for an interview to go into the next year, 24, 25 school year, as the first Avid sixth grade class and as the first Avid ninth grade class. The goal is that these cohorts then will wave through. It will be in replace of one of their electives. This elective is UC-approved. So it does, it is approved by the University of California system. And so it does count through A through G. And then the sixth grade will come all the way up. And in three years' time, we will no longer be interviewing ninth graders. Those sixth graders coming in will be interviewed and they will stay sixth through 12th grade. That's the point behind the whole process. Other districts, I know that we always like comparables. Newport Mesa has probably the most robust of the list. We are actually going in two weeks. We have a team that will be spending the full day in Newport Mesa, being able to look at how they started to kick off the implementation. Their population is exactly the same as ours. Demographics, socioeconomic status, same as Palo Alto. What's excellent is we got a two-for-one on this trip and I know that you guys like that. Is right now, our secondary math leadership team is actually in, up in San Francisco area, right at Stanford University. And they have a two-day training and Dr. Horvath, so thank you to him and the crowd, had connections at Palo Alto USD. And our team was able to go there yesterday for a full day visit to Gunn High School, which is one, if not the number one high school in the state. It competes with Whitney back and forth. But they were able to go and see the Avid program and see math instruction in the classroom for the full day. Culver City and El Segundo as well. So we have already went to Culver City, already have gone to El Segundo. So our last one on the list of visits is Newport Mesa. So what is Avid overall? Again, it's really lining to our strategic plan, which is important for you guys to be able to see the comparison. You know, it is built for all students. We are rolling this out as a piloted program to be able to identify and have the data to support for you guys before we go massive large scale. And making sure that everybody is really trained that has not had that previous experience. But it really is around educating students earlier on on the college and career readiness, on the post-secondary options. One of the questions that I've been asked on the street is how does this align with Naviance? Naviance is the software that we utilize, the curriculum that we utilize to be able to inform our families of post-secondary options. So we do, Kristin was up here earlier saying that they're going to do classroom guidance. The middle school, school counselors were going to do classroom guidance. One of those things is around Naviance and they go in and do that around post-secondary options. This is more intensive and I'll jump in in a second. Here's some data. You guys actually have a handout in front of you with actually the data that supports the Avid program. This isn't something that just came around. This has historically been around, I was part of the Avid program as the school counselor on the team from 2001 till about 2012 in my former district. We too will have those teams where it'll be a specific school counselor that will cultivate relationships with those 60 kids in sixth grade. And the same thing at the high school level. And just the framework itself, I wanted to make sure that this is out there for the, our community and our stakeholders to see. But really, I'm going to break it down in a couple ways. Is really, you're going to see in a second, a standard schedule. And in that schedule, I'll be able to unpack what that curriculum looks like. And you'll see that's the bulk of the pyramid. But the bottom half is where we, everyone in this room, everyone in this room comes into play. It's the relational capacity. It's building the relationships for the students. We're identifying the quiet ones in the classroom. And the whole point of Avid is being able to get them to individual determination. We are going to train them and teach them and cultivate them into being self-advocates, being able to public speak, being able to understand where they want to go as a student at a very early age. So they're making the right decisions as far as course selection goes, who they're hanging out with, et cetera. Here would be the actual Avid elective. There is a school-wide, some school districts and some programs have gone school-wide. We are not there yet. We are going to focus on just the Avid elective class first. And then eventually we'll start to do more large-scale professional developments around the strategies that I'm about to discuss with you. So then more of our teachers will start to implement it, which Sophia's already going to say, some of them she probably has because she's in advanced placement courses. The goal of Avid is to take our B C kid and get them to access rigor by the time they graduate. We are going to teach and train them to be advanced placement students by the time they graduate. The goal of Avid is for them to all take an advanced placement course here at Beverly before they graduate. Then to apply to a four-year institution and also have support within that scholarship process. So here would be a typical schedule. We will follow that same format where it would have our curriculum on two days a week, our tutorials are two days a week. And this is the fun part to unpack. It's a lot of responsibility on administration. So me and Maggie Mayberry will be taking a brunt of this on. Be able to recruit UCLA tutors. We would schedule this elective around our lunch period so that way we can bring on UCLA and LMU tutors. The point behind this is them having access to upper-level students. Upper-level students for the high school would be a UCLA student. Build that connection, understand that they too can then make it there and allow them to share some studying techniques or skills. And at the middle school, we would look at some of our high school students with the possibility of utilizing their lunch, of going down to the middle school to be able to tutor. And if that doesn't work out, then we would look towards the college-level tutors as well. Oh, and then the most important piece is, we would be leveraging like our college counselor, Casey Raleigh, Cindy Dubin, our career advisor, again, myself and Maggie to be, Ms. Mayberry, to be able to schedule all the things that needs to happen. Field trips to UCLA, taking these students, bringing guest speakers in from the community. We'd spoken about some of our newest alumni, bringing them back to make those connections and saying, I went to UCLA, I went to Indiana. And it's kind of motivational speaker, to get them access to things that they may not have and conversations in small groups, instead of sitting in a large churney and hearing it and sitting in the back and kind of zoning out, we put them on, on the spot. Okay. That's, I kind of talked you through. Here's all the things. Teacher facilitated learning, college readiness environment. Here's the strategies, and that's what I was talking about earlier. It's a WICRA strategy. These strategies will be used. Socratic seminars, I'm sure Sophia has sat through a Socratic seminar before. And it's, it feels probably way more natural for you. And for other students, it would be so uncomfortable that they would avoid taking advanced placement course or a higher level English course because of that, you know? And so what we want to do is be able to get them to Cornell note-taking. How are they actually structuring their notes to then be able to coach them to ask questions back to their teacher? Right? Teachers don't know what they don't know unless a student's able to advocate what I don't understand. And that's part of this process. Site-level team, it is, it is full school, it's, you know, principals, assistant principals, school counselors, district administration will all be part of this. And even you guys and those in the community, part of the Avid program too is on that Friday is bringing in guest speakers. And part of the guest speakers isn't about, I'm a lawyer or I'm an assistant superintendent. The guest speaking is about your pathway to get to where you were today. And that's what you're sharing, your stumbles, your successes. I went to school here, I did this, I did this, I did this, I participated in this in high school. You're sharing experiences that they might make connections with and then find you as a future mentor. So all of you on the dais will be part of the Avid program and be coming in to speak. Okay. I'm going to jump on, I'm going to move into summer school. So that's the Avid program. I look forward to being able to further flesh it out, bring more information to you throughout the semester. We're going to start training, get into the summer and start our selection process for our students.
Sorry. Is anybody going to ask a question? Because I would love to just ask you a couple of questions about Avid before you move on.
Oh, perfect.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand, let's say I'm a fifth grade student. Am I being invited to take Avid as an elective class based on my performance and my teacher's desire to help me develop my skills?
Correct. So it is a recommendation by fifth and eighth grade teams. And then there's an interview process. So those incoming fifth grade students will be interviewed by Dr. Scott, myself and their, once we assign the school counselor for that program. Same thing at the high school, we'll be interviewing eighth grade students to be part of the program going into ninth grade. Because the only way that this will work is if you have the right people also within the classroom. One bad apple could ruin the bunch. And there may need to be other interventions provided for those students. So we're looking to create that family within that cohort.
And then in terms of the piloting of the program, does that mean that there will be one elective class for sixth graders and one elective class for ninth graders? That's the Avid class?
It'll be two, two sections in ninth grade. So we're looking at 60 students to be enrolled and then 60 students in sixth grade as well. So it'll be two and two for them to be able to roll up. And eventually, the goal is that you'll have two per grade band. So let's say that a student moves out of the district and it's something we have no control over and they have to leave the Avid program, that frees up a spot for us to have a conversation during an SST meeting or refer to our school counselors or academic teams to say, would you make a recommendation? And in my experience, and so talking to El Segundo Newport Mesa, unfortunately, they don't have enough spots for the number of families and kids that want to be a part of the program. It's the adverse and not, you know, oh my gosh, it's there to die. It's more want access to it. But unfortunately, you have to be very specific for the data to work for the outcome.
Okay. And then, so in other words, it's just as two sixth grade classes. So when those 60 kids shift to the seventh grade, they're not in Avid anymore?
No, they, our goal is sixth to 12th grade. They will stay through it all the way up till the end.
So it would become a six-year elective program?
Hopefully.
Oh, that's very interesting. And what, and you mentioned that there's UC credit available?
Correct. The program is UC-approved.
And what credit, what UC?
It's an elective credit, so it's G.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we have to have, students have to have, oh my gosh, you just, 30 elective credits? credits to graduate? Come on, it's in our book.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, sorry.
That's very interesting. So then, for example, when you're explaining it to the students?
Fifty-five elective credits.
Fifty-five.
Oh, my gosh, sorry.
If you'd like to, would you call it like a combination of study hall and college preparation? How, what would you call it?
I would call it, that, so it's, it's, but it's all, it's not just college preparation, it's training them to be young adults earlier, catching the student that may slide under the radar for multiple years and teaching them how to shake your hand, keep eye contact, understand what they're learning and then figure out and formulate questions around through the Cornell notes. What is it that you actually didn't understand? You can't come home and say, I don't get geometry. Because that's a whole year's worth of curriculum. What is it that you specifically didn't understand today and now be able to either advocate that to that teacher or to that tutor? So many times we utilize air tutors and they sit and the feedback I get from the air tutors is like, they couldn't articulate what was the question that they actually didn't understand. So there wasn't a way for me to be able to move them forward because they just said, I don't get it.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for being innovative and brave enough to try new things and please come back to us with an update.
I think, yeah, I had a question.
I did. Did you have anything, by the way? Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing and gathering from this whole thing is it's kind of just a very fancy life and study skills class. Is that really what we're talking about?
On steroids and it's, yes.
We don't promote drug use in the district, but thank you.
Yes, totally, yes.
The, my, so I guess my next question is, why do we need them to do this and what do we get when you bundle a three-year package you had mentioned earlier? What are you actually getting? What is the product or service or is it a software license or what is it?
Totally. So, so our three-year quote, I'm jumping ahead so that way hopefully it'll make it easier for you guys next year, would be 80,000 over three years. And what that is, is it's extensive training, so it's training four times a year. So I hope to be able to move Maggie into a position around being the district director that's part of the team. So her training alone, where she's able to go in and audit programs within our school to make sure that they're actually sticking to the curriculum, the right kids are on the bus, interviewing, application processes, et cetera. Inside there, you're also training the teachers around the WICHER strategies. So one teacher may be able to deliver a Socratic seminar, but the other one may not be able to and making sure that we're doing it consistently across all of them and that all the students have access to WICHER strategy. Because as a social studies teacher, I may never use a Socratic seminar, but you see it quite frequently in our higher-level Englishes. So if it's a non-English teacher, I need to be very comfortable in being able to deliver that. So it's, it's extensive training over the next three years plus the curriculum and then they're coaching and mentoring to help us get this off correctly.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Did many students come out of it and decide they don't want to participate in it? Like what's the dropout rate? I know you have many students that want to come into it, but do you have many students that drop out in terms of your researching it with the other districts?
Totally. And so, good question. So Newport Mesa was the one that we were like, in my former, in my former experience, it was well-established. I had the adverse where kids weren't dropping out, they were fighting for spots. Newport Mesa, which is an earlier, recent adoption, so I think they're going into year four. And the reason we were going with 30 per and that typically we would sit around about 20 to 25 because you want that close-knit feel and you really want to make a change because you're really spending time investing in them. For that attrition for those kids that get in and then year one is we're building the program and the pilot, they flee, we still have a robust program. So that gives us flexibility if, hopefully we keep all 60, but if we get down to 55, we get down to 55 and we're still running a robust program for, you know, our federal dollars. And so they said it was about five, five students each year as they progressed through.
I would imagine that there's also ways to evaluate how well the program is doing since it's been around for some time. So what are those metrics and how do they, how often is it evaluated?
Absolutely. So just even with our own team, the way that we want to be able to evaluate the effectiveness is just the performance and overall summatives. So I'm looking at our I-ready, well, it wouldn't be our I-ready because they're coming out of middle school, it's our N W E A data. So looking at them as a cross-sample compared to our mass, so seeing how they're performing from previous years too. So when they entered the program, did they maintain at the same level or did these strategies actually change the way that they're performing at benchmarks, but also at summative, so CASP? And then the end goal is the overall percentage of this population going to a four-year institution and then also achieving scholarships. So the end goal of this program really is to be able to find those families through that interview process of what is your level of knowledge of the post-secondary options? And they really don't have much or maybe they're talking, they'll reference their neighbor. And our goal is to get them well-equipped so they become that good neighbor to give that information to others, but then get them to a four-year institution, which our outcome lines right with our strategic plan is, our goal is to increase our U.S. News World Report. We are identifying this middle-grade student that scoring a two on the CASP that could be pushed to scoring a three. Pushing two to three in such a small district out of the 60 will make a significant impact in our overall data. So there's multiple benefits to come out of this, but there's multiple ways to monitor this success. Also Ds and Fs, monitoring those, right? So we have that B C kid that's in fifth grade, they jump into sixth grade, that's who usually hits our D-list first. They don't know how to advocate and they were in a isolated classroom. Now they're moving through seven different teachers and they don't know how to speak up. And then you add that they're coming, we're meshing two different schools together. So those are the types of things that we're measuring to make sure that those are the right kids on the bus, you know, inside the classroom and that the program is working the way it should be. And so that's, those, those will be it.
Well, it's wonderful to hear that we're going to have that here and try it. They have similar programs for university when students come in. It's first-time, first, you know, family member to attend a university.
Freshman academies and stuff, yeah.
And it seems that those are very successful, so it makes a lot of sense. I'm looking forward to seeing it.
When you envision a class, an Avid class, and let's say during the course of the day, the students will be going to their other classes, but then one period a day they come to Avid, is that I envision it. And how many students do you envision that would be in that type of a class?
So we're, we're scheduling 30. So, yep, 30 in each class.
Well, it sounds like the teacher who has to be extremely well-trained to help these kids is more of a counselor that, and, and I don't know that they, you know, they come in and they have all these subjects that they need help with and this person has to be able to almost help them in all the subjects. It has to be the most unusual. At the high school, I don't know if that's going to be as easy as it might be in the middle school for students to find a person who can help the students. It's going to take a very special teacher and almost a counselor to help these kids along as I can see it. Because these are the kids that would be struggling in the other classes, the social studies or math or whatever, maybe not all of them, but some of them. And so they're going to come to this class for some additional help. That takes a very, very special person and I, I don't know, you're going to be training this person, but is it also going to be that you're going to need to hire a new person for this, for this program or are we going to try and use teachers that are within our district so that we can keep the numbers there?
I think it's an excellent question and I don't mean to jump in, but that's why we're bringing it to you now. We feel that we do now finally have the right people on the bus. So the Board of Education being able to provide me with a coordinator. I didn't have additional certificated support within ed services prior to being able to bring on that position. So I wouldn't have been able to dedicate my time and effort as much as what, to do this correctly because it is a full-team effort. You're right, it's not just a singleton teacher in the classroom being able to pull this off. It really is, Drew has to be a part of it, Kelly has, Dr. Skon and Mr. Principal Stewart, you know, they, they have to be part of that. In addition to Mrs. Marcus, it's bringing in the tutorials as well. So two days is access to bringing in like the UCLA engineering program. They've, we have already been in conversation and having them come in and do some of the tutoring with our high school students during that session. So that, that's where the, we get those tutors in play as well so that teacher doesn't have to be a master of all. They're master of teaching study skills, they're master of teaching how to advocate during Socratic seminar and listening to an argument and then being able to rebuttal at an effective time and not clashing, right? We see that so frequently within our own adult is you're just waiting for someone to be quiet so you could start speaking. We're teaching them that patience of reflection then speaking. So those are the types of strategies that we'll be working with those students on.
Out of curiosity, and this has maybe a little bit of bearing on, what percentage of our students in the high school this year, what percentage of them went, went, applied to four-year colleges? Not how many got in, but how many, what percentage? Do we know what percentage of, not how many they applied to, but let's say they had 100 students and 75% applied to at least one four-year college. Do we have that?
We do, but I would have to bring that back because I would totally lie to you right now if I just didn't have the number.
That would have, I mean, that would carry some weight to this also as I, as I see it. So, but no, this, this is a wonderful thing. I, I think of the students that might really benefit from this and to get them to be motivated to take it, therein lies the big issue, I think, because I don't think that students would like to be, I'm in the Avid, the Avid class and is there a stigma that might come with that from, from the other students or something? I just, I wonder about that.
It's actually the other way around. I mean, it is also coming from an Avid school district where we were a demonstration site for other schools to come visit. There is a very special bond and a very special collaboration that happens and, and you're right, it, it has to be the right teacher to pull this group together. But, you know, when you think about in, in, you know, just to use Sophia again, just thinking about your own class, you know, there's, there's, there's so many kids that, that just aren't even looking towards college, not even, you know, even into their junior year, senior, they're still, but to get these kids in sixth grade and you will see they, it is, rooms are decorated with pendants from college all over. I mean, there's this spirit of, of kids really at sixth grade wanting to, they know where they want to go.
Okay. Well, just a thought of that I had and thank you very much. And I look forward to going back to this when you're ready to really present it for our approval. I really think that that would be wonderful and we can really know how it's going to work and so on. I think that's going to be very important.
Dr. Stern, I had one more follow-up if you don't have anything.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The, the one concern I have is shouldn't the goal of this is to be to exit children out of it, just like any intervention, any IEP, is that the fact that you keep them from sixth to 12 almost is an admittance of the failure of the program itself? You should, judging by what you're telling me that they're going to be learning, that they really should get that stuff in middle school before they go to high school. The goal should be to exit them out before they go to high school. Maybe you need a ninth-grade class for new kids and all that, but I can't see why this would be a seven-year journey.
So because it's developmentally appropriate. So we're not talking Socratic seminar in sixth grade, we're actually talking about it in ninth grade so they could try to take an AP course by 10th or 11th grade. During the 11th grade, the curriculum actually isn't WICHER any longer, it's actually them starting to write their college essays. So it's that 60, 60-student band that like, I'm going to be honest with, you know, as a former school counselor, you have your high-performing students that you're writing 18,000 letters of recommendation for, they're applying to 17 colleges and then you have maybe a couple of transition meetings with your IEP staff of trying to figure out solutions or opportunities. And there's that middle band that could slip through the cracks because they don't know how to advocate, but now we know that someone's holding them accountable. What we've talked about before is getting everybody to apply to a four-year institution, not only just apply, but get accepted and then find a scholarship that matches. That's the 11th grade curriculum going into 12th grade. So there, it isn't just about those WICHER strategies, those are those early on and they're broken up throughout sixth, seventh, eighth and ninth grade year. And then when they get into that AP course, who's there to support them? We pushed them there, but who's there to be able to support them through that tutoring process? So it really isn't about the exit, exit is them getting into a four-year institution committed, a four-year, it sounds weird, a four-year university committed, going and scholarship dollars to follow. That's the goal and that's the data point in which they will, you know, 85% of their graduating class has enrolled into.
That helps a little bit. Thank you, Dustin. I'll wait to see more details as they come in.
I'm sorry, really quickly, I was curious. So to clarify, first of all, these would be class sections being taught by current teachers?
Correct.
Okay, um, have there been ideas as to what kinds of sections, like academic or elective, we would be cutting to free up the, the room for these and their schedules?
They're existing. So we already have embedded study halls that are not as structured, meaning we are, we are trying to utilize that time to be able to teach and mentor in our current schedule today, 612. We're replacing those sections with this curriculum in hopes that we get a different outcome because if we continue to do the same thing, we're the crazy ones, right? And so our focus is obviously through the strategic plan, our making sure one year's growth in one year's time and then obviously our post-secondary options. And so that's what we want. This is why this aligns nicely. So it's not a swap of, it's a replacement of something that's a bit antiquated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I swear I'm going to talk fast in these next months. Here we go, summer school. So I, first and foremost, need to think about 20 teachers across the district and I will send you all individual emails and thank you. We had a, I'm going to say wonderful, really great time. Our summer school committee met numerous times outside of the school day as we were transitioning it off from B H F. I want to thank B H F out there for all the years of support for summer school, but this is our first year taking over as a full B H U S D organization. Again, we had about 25 teachers, give or take, would stay after school with me, the ed services team, the site administration, really beating up and evaluating surrounding district summer school to really what is ethically, what, what are we here to do? And that's to close educational gaps and to move our students' learning. And so this is where we have finally agreed to and upon. So some of the things that I want to just highlight is, here's the dates. We will be offering a 30-day consecutive elementary summer school program. Now, I think that we would have liked to think of that first, but that is part of our requirement now. So it's basically extended school year and there will be an after-school care component tied to that. So we are looking at, students will now be on our campuses from 8:30 till about 6:00 PM during the summer. So that is a significant change that we've never seen that before, not since we've, while we've been here. Also BV, there, there again is the same thing. They though will be in-person from 8:00 to 11:30, so that'll be slightly semi-usual. We're doing a three-course sequence where we're rotating students that are rising to the next grade level between English, math and a study skills course. And then the high school, we are looking at, there are some advancement opportunities such as personal finance and health for incoming ninth grade or other students, but also course replacement. The exciting part about the summer school opportunity is I will be sending out communication directly from my office to all those that qualify and you're asking me what qualifying for. Summer school is free for the following qualified students. So, and it's only open towards this. This is the criteria for summer school. So I want to be very clear to everybody out there listening. Our EL Title I and special education students that it goes with their transition plan and their IEP team will get communication from me as of probably this Friday, offering them this opportunity to participate in our summer school through B H U S D, the district-funded summer school opportunity. From there, if seats are not filled, we will then be able to open that up to our academic deficient students based on, we are evaluating holistically test scores, grades and credits. And then from there, if we still have open seats to ensure that we have full sections during the summer, is that we will also then open it up to the masses and we will utilize the registration stamp date for the time of admittance into the program and we will continue to keep a wait list. Why is this important to know? Because we were for, just recently, if you guys recall, we were, one of the exhibits, and I'm just going to be open and honest, of a civil lawsuit that happened in Palos Verdes where they were naming for-profit summer summer school programs where they're charging. And so, that's part of the reason why Beverly Hills Education Foundation was wanting to relinquish that. But also, we have the ELP grant that does support our sub-population such as ELL and Title I in the after-school care that we have to provide 30 consecutive days for summer school. So, all of those combined gave us that opportunity to really transition summer school back over to education services and for us to be able to provide an opportunity of in-person learning to close educational gaps specifically for this laundry list in that order for criteria. Um, so, so unfortunately, that means that there will be a small population of families that may have paid for summer school through BHF in past. However, the great part is, is our partners with the city offer robust summer school opportunities and, uh, programs. And so their, theirs will be coming out as well, which is on our campuses right alongside of us, and we're even sharing after-school care. Um, and so, like in past, what some people may not have known, they may have paid for BHF, we still were running some, some format of this program, but we are paying BHF to run it for these students. Now, we're just taking control over it. I'll pause there because there may be some questions around summer school itself.
So, for the, the student who is going into ninth grade that wants to take health, you may have already addressed this, but isn't credit deficient or any of those things, but just because it's a good idea, would that, that, then that student wouldn't be appropriate for this?
No, I'm glad you asked. And so, so the way that that works, any of the advancement courses that are open, we will start from 12th down. So, the way that the criteria will work is if there's a rising 12th grade student that hasn't taken health yet-
And has to.
-that needs to get it. So, say a kid just transferred in during 11th grade, health wasn't a requirement in Texas, we see it all the time, and instead of forcing that student into a, you know, a 10th grade class and, you know, back as a 12th grade student, we'll give them their first seat here. They'd be the first student we would be looking for. And then we'll work our way down, all the way down into those incoming students. The one thing that I, I am aware of, and I'm just going to call it out, is that I am aware that we have removed a little bit of that flexibility during summer because we're asking students to be on campus and in-person.
In-person, okay.
We want, we want our teachers to deliver the instruction, and we want them to create that camaraderie and that opportunity and be here. So, that may limit some of those that are looking for advancements. For those that have questions, I refer you back to, one, you can always reach out to me, but two, on the high school website, under the school counseling tab, there's a summer school tab. And on there, there's also, we have board policy that says that students can take 40 credits externally from any institution as long as it's pre-approved. That applies to the health, the personal finance. We have a list of schools and providers that we have already approved. They can get the form filled out. They can either send it directly to me or their school counselor, and we'll approve that, and they can still take it. If, say, they're traveling to Portugal for the summer, they can still take an online program.
What about Apex and the, the online offerings, I think it was called Apex, that students have been doing? Is that one option?
It is not.
Okay.
We're doing, we're, we're in-person, in-your-face.
So, so Apex was the original, like, online?
Yep. We, we utilized hybrid versions coming out of COVID and then kind of rolled through with that flexibility through BHF. And then now that we're kind of back into this, um, you know, back together, uh, we felt ethically that we needed this opportunity to ensure that we're closing educational gaps and that we had the kids back in seats, working together with those teachers and supports. Um, you know, bringing on some of our instructional assistants, I saw Carol in the room, being able to make sure that we have small group instruction, that we were delivering in masses.
Dustin, also, it's for special education students who do not have ESY on their IEP.
Oh, yes. Yeah. And it's for special education students that do not have ESY on their IEP. If you have any questions, um, yeah.
Do you want me to explain what, I don't, okay.
No, I was just gonna, thank you.
All right, so any other further questions?
Just a couple. So, um, when you're saying that this is required, do you mean that the Department of Education is requiring it?
Correct.
Okay.
We want, we would always offer some format of summer school. Some of the structure within that summer school is required by ed code at this time.
So, then, and then who, who's paying for this summer school?
So, partially it's an ELP.
Ohio.
No, no, yeah, yeah. So, partially it's an ELLP grant, and then we're also going to be able to piecemeal some of our Title I and Title III because those are the students that it's serving initially.
Okay, so you've provided us the schedule, Horseman and Hawthorne, 8:30 to 2:30-
Correct.
...for the 30 days with aftercare. BVMS is only 8?
To 11:30 because-
11:30.
Yep. We, we have found in past, from past data, that we have very low enrollment and attendance in the middle school because they typically are overly involved in the sports camps.
Athletics, yeah.
And so, what we're trying to do is entice them to get them to do a little bit of both.
So, these will all be in harmony?
Yes, that's our goal.
Okay. And then at the high school, it'll be from 8:45 to noon?
Yep. And there'll be two semesters. So, like, let's say that you were so successful in Algebra I, Semester I, you would have to attend Semester I.
Okay. So, what, so, and these hours and these slots, if we have, let's say, half of our kids match with those descriptions, then all of those students would have this opportunity?
Correct.
Okay. And then what, what percentage of our students are EL, Title I, Special Ed, or academic, academically deficient?
So, we have 251 EL students, TK through 12th grade.
Between 3100, approximately?
Correct.
3107 kids.
Uh, and then, then, um, for, for the Title I, uh, that's where it gets a little dicey, and I'm going to kind of have to unpack this a little bit for the community, is, Title I, we've used so much about like, a Horseman is Title I. Title I isn't a school in BHUSD. Title I is a student-
Student, yeah.
-that qualifies for free and reduced lunch. And there are students at Hawthorne that qualify for free reduced lunch. And so, there's 17% of our district at this point now has qualified-
Is Title I.
-for Title, Title I services, targeted services, which is what we do. The dollar follows the kid.
Okay, thank you. And then what percentage are EL approximately?
Uh, it's 251 students.
250, got it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
So, about 8%?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the, yeah.
Two, so 3,000, if we have 3,000 kids or 3100, 300 or 10 would be 10%. So, let's say 250 is around 8%. Okay, so we've got, you said 17% and 8%, so we're like at about 25%. And then how many of our students are special education?
So, approximately across the district?
Yes.
We have about 13 to 14% of students that are special education.
Okay.
Sometimes it goes up to high 17, so I would say in that range of those students.
So, now we're at like 40%?
But also, let me back that up though. Some of them are dual diagnosed, so they could be an English, an ELT student-
There could be some overlap.
-and special education, or they could be Title I in EL, or they could be special education in Title I.
So, 30, 30 percentage?
I would say 30% probably in math.
So, the first three are 30% of our kids?
Correct.
And then how many of our students would you, how are you defining academic deficiency in this context?
So, we're utilizing those three. So, we have to match holistically all three, that they're either demonstrating, especially at the early grade bands, low test scores through I Ready or NWEA, and in addition, we'll have CAS scores going into summer, but that's down the road. Uh, we'll also look at grades, if they're scoring ones and twos on standards-based grades, or they're scoring Cs or below, um, on their report cards. And then credit deficient at the high school level, you know who you are if you're credit deficient.
Okay, got you. So, then, but we would be, so maybe like 60% of our students would be eligible in total. So, this is an invitation-
Yep.
-that they could accept or decline?
Correct. And then open seats would go into the fifth bullet is because we have to run the program, we want to make sure that it's full.
Yes.
So, that was when we would be able to open it up to the whole community. So, that's why we're starting this so early, is communication will come out of my office hopefully by Friday the latest for the invitation with a couple weeks open to fill it in, couple reminders along the way. We'll then close it at that point and then be able to say, okay, well, we have still six more spots in Algebra I. Are there students that we already know through the school councils and stuff that are credit deficient that have failed this year as freshmen?
Yeah, you go down the list.
Yep, and start 12th grade down in a holistic review.
Okay. Um, and they do not pay for these classes?
They do not pay for these classes.
It's like an extension of the actual school year?
Correct.
I got you. But then, my question to you is, so what is happening to the other 40%, 50% who are ineligible for these or who would be the registration stamp? So, maybe these classes are not even appropriate for them based on the cohort in there?
Correct.
So, what are those students going to do? They can take the, will there still be like health and?
Yep, so, so we will, we will-
This is in addition to our-
Well, no, no, let's back that up though. So, let's, let's, because each grade level is totally different experience. So, the high school specifically, really, summer school should be a credit deficient. We utilize it a lot for advancement. What I'm reminding the community is BHF and ed services and BHUSD, we've always had a hard time running the high school portion of that summer school process because most of the families, like a state, would go to Portugal and find a different online program or a different program that worked with their schedule. So, they are still paying for those opportunities to advance or possibly credit recovery through that approved list that's listed.
Apex and-
Yep, 100%.
I'm with you.
Method.
We, we hope that being the educators that we are, the community that we are, we hope those that receive the invitation will help us drag their student to that invitation, right? So, we can close that educational gap, that we are educating them in person.
And then is the, is the comprehensive approach going to be that the sports program will also be in the first month of summer so that these will all align with athletics and so on and so forth, and then our staff and families are really taking July off?
So, the elementary portion goes till the end of July.
Yes, I see that, but-
And so does the high school piece. We, we go into July into two of the three programs.
Yeah, the top two.
Uh, top one and bottom one.
Okay. Is there a, is there a way to have them run more concurrently so that, we have so many families, for example, that have a third grader and a sixth grader and an eighth and a ninth grader. So, is there a way to have these calendars be more harmonious and simultaneous so that we have a better chance of attracting the kids?
Yes. So, developmentally, the, the ed code is around the elementary level. So, that is mandatory that we have to be able to provide an extended day from basically 8:30 to 6:00. But we leverage our partnership with the city to be able to cover that 2:30 to 6:00 part because we don't, I mean, no, no school district can find teachers to stay for the after-school care.
And they know about this need coming up?
Yep. We, we are working, um, in other meetings to be able to, be able to finalize the registration, tell them the total number of students, and being able to partner with them to find the proper partner. Yep.
I will tell you, this concerns, this concerns me, the inconsistency of the calendar. I'm sure that you've thought it through, and I'm sure that you're dealing with a ton of logistics-
Yeah.
-up with you.
Yeah, and then the, the 612 has always been kind of that, to keep a singleton student into a course for more than, we're looking at C hours, which we qualify for advancement. Like, did they meet a certain number of instructional minutes to qualify for the credit? That's what we're up against. And then to go past lunch, we would lose, everybody would lose their mind.
The hours of the day are not, I hear you completely on the hours of the day. I'm more concerned about the differential in the calendar.
Yeah. And, and so for the, for the secondary-
Am I missing something? Because it looks like the elementary and the high school have the same calendar.
Yes.
They do, but the high school is two semesters.
Right. They still, they still start on June 10th and end on-
They do.
-July 23rd or 24th. And then it's the middle school only has three weeks, it looks like.
Yeah.
So, the differential is, you mean the three weeks at the middle school that there's no school?
I mean, I just think that if it's a family that has an elementary schooler and a middle, middle schooler, and they might be, trust me, I understand that academics are the number one priority. So, you, you got me there. Um, I just think that as they're juggling summer plans, um, you know, the dates not being exactly the same might be a factor.
Yeah.
The summer plans are more important than the kids succeeding during the school year-
I'm with you.
-and not needing to go to summer school.
Right.
Then there's a-
And also, and the convenience of drop-off.
Right. This could be a problem for nobody-
Yep.
-if we all did our jobs.
Trust me, you're speaking to the choir on this one. My priorities align with yours. I'm just highlighting that this is, you know, something that I see. And you know what? Maybe it ends up being a non-issue.
Yeah. And it's, and it's what we'll find out through registration too, is that's why, because we're doing this in January, we still have plenty of months to be able to adjust or, um, you know, also just recruit. Uh, this is a heavy lift to ask of our instructional, our teachers, our faculty, our staff, our administration, you know? Um, and so, I think we'll all be at some time a summer school principal or AP this summer, you know, just because of how many days it's, and we're such a, you know, small district.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Guys, colleagues, may I recommend that we go on? We have three presentations ahead of us.
Go ahead, ask one question.
Okay.
And Beverly Hills Middle School, according to this, if a student was weak in math, there's no chance for them to just take a math class, according to this?
We, we, so, we realized through our data that we've collected pre-this decision, those that aren't really doing that great in math are typically not really doing that great in ELA, and it's usually associated with some sort of study skills or advocacy skills. So, that's why we tripled it up, and they can do a three-course rotation. So, like, when sixth grade's meeting with the study skills teacher, the seventh grade's with ELA, the eighth grade's with math, and then we rotate them through the day. So, it also minimizes our staff and our overhead from cost, but it also gives them the opportunity to really, we're treating them to be better students so they become better math students.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Really robust presentation, a lot of information on the Avid as well as, um, summer changes.
Can I just, one quick, and I swear to you, I'm out of here. I know, course selection. I just want to thank everybody and anybody from school councils. What you guys have here is, uh, what, tomorrow, the high school students, oh, sorry, the eighth grade students, uh, my team went over to BV today and put these on every single chair in the auditorium. So, when the students walk in tomorrow at 11:30 to the sounds of the band and the dance team and Principal Stewart and his team welcoming them ASB kids, they will have the brand-new Pathways to Success, which is the 612 guide versus it used to be a 68 guide and a 912 guide. Um, but here's, here's a series of events that are just coming up that are only these upcoming events. So, incoming ninth grade town hall, we just had yesterday, uh, it was well-attended, over 120 logins. So, who knows what that translates to in families considering there's 278 eighth graders. I know that because I counted out 278 bags today. Um, and then tomorrow, uh, so, so then tomorrow, there, uh, everyone will be at BV at 11:30 to be able to give the same baseline information to the incoming ninth grade parents. The reason it was a Zoom, and I want to talk about that for the community, is not because we wanted it in-person, it was because we wanted to provide a baseline of information before they came in person. So, what we experienced in previous years with open houses, some families would come and never had experience with high school, so they stepped on campus and didn't know what to ask or didn't know what to do. What we did was we were able to provide them with a pre-informational meeting via Zoom. So, when they come, and it's not open house, it's actually welcoming incoming ninth grade Family Night on January 30th, now they have a lot more information, they have handouts and documents to prepare them for their questioning on the 30th. Same thing for the sixth graders. We're going to do that parent town hall, which will be January 29th at 1:30. Then we'll turn around and go to Hawthorne and Horseman on February 1st, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. They too will get not a high school bag, but a middle school bag. It's, they're cute, right? I mean, people-
Yes, really, they're cute.
Um, and then, um, we'll follow up with the Best Student Show, which is the BVMS, incoming sixth grade open house on February 6th. Um, Dr. Bargat alluded to the math professional development, save the dates. Save the dates, just for those out there, Elementary Literacy Night, March 13th. I think, uh, our elementary team, Elementary Science and Engineering Fair is April 16th. We always look for judges. And it's becoming assessment seasons coming up, second semester. Here we go, Sophia, let's buckle down. We want the high school to, everybody to crush the casp. I'm done, mic drop.
Thank you. Very comprehensive.
Yeah, they're in the red. Yeah, your pathways booklets are inside your high school bag.
Okay, great. Uh, next we have a presentation and acceptance of 2022, 2023 District Financial Audit. Uh, next we have a presentation and acceptance of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three District Financial Audit.
And good evening, Board President Dr. Stern and our Board. Uh, so we have our presentation today. We have three of them lined up here consecutively. I'd like to cede the floor now to Mr. Jesus Cardenas, who's our auditor. Um, and he will be presenting today regarding our audits. I just wanted to, just before he starts, just to thank, um, our, our team. Uh, the District Audit is truly a comprehensive, um, team effort. Uh, we've reached out to, uh, Ms. Laura Collins Williams. We reached out to, to, uh, to, to the whole executive cabinet team. Dr. Horvath helped out, Mr. Seaman as well, everyone, Dr. Braggy as well. Everyone had a crucial role. I just want to thank my accounting team as well, Ms. Maria Ludearkos, um, all our accounting team that really put everything together. Uh, thanks to everyone, and I'll cede the floor to Mr. Jesus Cardenas. Um, I'm sorry, Jesus, we can't hear you. I think you have to turn your volume up there. And while they do that, just, I want to also thank our auditors for their support. Um, it's always really good to have a good relationship with your auditors. And I think we have a great relationship with Christie White and Associates. And, uh, Mr. Cardenas has really, uh, been phenomenal for us, and I just want to thank him as well. Okay, it's still not, um, not, we, I'm so sorry, we're still not hearing you. I think it's on our side. I think we have to turn up the volume, uh, for the Zoom, for the speaker. Okay, let's see. I'll wait for. Okay, I'll wait for our cave of, uh, let's see if we can hear now. Uh, did you want to say a? Let's see, okay. Oh, okay, that's a good sign. woke me up a little bit. Okay. I'm still not hearing you, uh. So maybe if I, I have an idea, what if I turn on my volume here? Jesus, can you? Okay, but that'll cause, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not, for some reason, it's not working.
I mean, is it on that monitor? I've seen them.
Jesus, can you, uh, say something? Jesus, can you try again, please? Oh.
You can hear in there, but.
So it's here, though?
Not sure, but. Hold on one second, let me try. How can I do this? So can you, can you speak again?
Hello, how about now?
There you go, there you go.
There you go?
Yes, thank you, sorry about that.
No worries, I thought there was something probably wrong on my end, but glad to see everything's working now. Thank you for the introduction, Rafael. Like you mentioned, my name is Jesus Cardenas. I am the auditor of Christie White, and I'll be going over the financial audit report presentation for the district. I put together a short presentation, am I allowed to share my screen or?
Yes, go ahead and share.
Okay, perfect.
She wants a little louder volume.
Okay, can, can our team turn it up a little bit louder, please? Uh, thank you. Go ahead, Jesus, are you able to share? Okay.
Yeah, are you going to see that on your end?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, this is actually the bond report. Let me switch over to the district report, okay? Sorry, one second, let me switch over to the district report first. All right, how's that look?
That's, we could see it, yes.
Okay, perfect. I'll first be going over the district report and I'll be going over to the district, um, I mean, the bond report, which is just the financial audit. And I believe Moss Adams afterwards will be covering the performance audit. So, um, the fiscal year that we'll be covering is from June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and it's from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And I'll be going over the summary of the auditor's results as it was presented in the audit report and the opinions that we issued in the audit report. So the first question you might be asking from an outside perspective is what is the point of the audit? Right? What is the auditor's responsibility when it comes to the audit report? Well, in summary, we have to issue an opinion in the audit report related to three major areas related to the district, and those areas are the financial statements, federal compliance, and state compliance. And the opinion is basically the auditor certification of the results of the audit. And there are different types of opinions that can be received in the audit report. And the unmodified opinion is the best opinion that you can receive. And we, we issued an unmodified opinion in each section of the district's, um, areas that we had to audit, which are the financial statements, federal compliance, and state compliance. And an overview of the results is presented on page eighty-nine of the audit report. And although we did, um, issue an unmodified opinion related to state compliance, we did have to disclose a few minor findings related to state compliance, which we'll be covering in the following slides. But even though we did issue a few minor findings, it wasn't significant enough to change the opinion that we issued in the audit report related to state compliance. And in the next slides, I'll be going over into more detail exactly what we do in regards to our procedures over each area regarding the financial statements, federal compliance, and state compliance. So in first two paragraphs of page one, you can see the opinion on the financial statements that we issued in the independent auditor's report. And in our opinion, the financial statements referred to present fairly nonmaterial respects to respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Beverly Hills Unified School District as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof of the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So this is a little summary of the opinion that we issued related to the financial statements. And a little summary of our procedures when it comes to the financial statements. We're basically verifying cash balances, we're looking at district bank reconciliations, we're looking at accounts receivable balances and making sure that those are being properly recorded. Same thing with accounts payable. We're also looking at the district's capital assets, long-term debt. So we're looking to see that everything's being correctly reported and that there's no overstatement or misstatement in account balances. Uh, because if there wasn't a statement, they will have to, of course, adjust for that in the audit report. And we're also looking to see that there is proper internal controls when it comes to the reporting of these transactions. So we're verifying that these balances are being correctly and fairly reported for the users of these financial statements. And after performing procedures related to the financial statements, we didn't note any significant deficiencies, material weakness, or non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. And the report on internal controls outlined in the report that begins on page eighty of the audit report. So that's the first area where we issue an opinion on the financial statements. And the second area where we issue an opinion on is on federal compliance. So this is the district's single audit, also referred to as the federal compliance audit. And if the district exceeds more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, then they're subject to a federal compliance audit. And the main program that we tested here was the E S F program, which is your Easter and your gear funds. And the testing that we do is mainly expenditure-based. We're testing personnel costs and non-personnel costs. So for personnel costs, we're looking at employees that were charged to program, we're looking at time certifications, verifying that there's time accounting in place. And for any employees that were charged to the program, we're verifying that they're being paid the correct amount based on their par forms or any applicable support. And for non-personnel costs, we're reviewing the allowability of that expense when it relates to the E S F program. And we're also reviewing that there's proper supporting documentation in place and that there's proper approvals in place for these, that there's, for some of these funds. And the first two paragraphs of page eighty-two, you can see the opinion that we issued on federal compliance. And in our opinion, Beverly Hills, Beverly Hills Unified School District complied in nonmaterial respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major programs for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And after, after performing procedures over federal compliance, we didn't note any significant deficiencies, material weakness, and there was no findings to disclose in the audit report. And the last area where we issue an opinion on is on state compliance. And our procedures for state compliance come directly from the annual audits of K through twelve, local education agencies, and state compliance reporting. This is the state audit guide that we use to help us plan for and know which, um, programs and awards that we have to test for state compliance. And this is our testing that we do for attendance, instructional times, S A R C, L cap, and duplicated. So there's various programs and awards that we have to test. And on a yearly basis, a lot of stuff gets added, a lot of stuff gets removed, a lot of changes that can occur in state compliance. So it's pretty difficult to receive no findings in this area because of all the yearly changes in comparison to federal compliance and the reporting of the financial statements. And as you can see below, we did issue three findings, which I'll be covering in more detail in the following slides. But findings are related to classroom teacher salaries, home and school transportation, and the ratio of administrative employees to teachers. And in the first two paragraphs of page eighty-five, you can see the opinion that we issued on state compliance. And in our opinion, Beverly Hills Unified School District complied nonmaterial respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on the applicable state programs for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-three. So like I mentioned, even though we did disclose these findings in the audit report, they're not significant enough to change the opinion that we issued since they are just minor findings that we had to disclose in the audit report. And next slide, so the first finding is finding number twenty twenty-three, zero zero one, Classroom Teacher Salaries, which is a repeat finding of last year. And this is outlined on page ninety-two. And in summary, in the twenty twenty-two to twenty-three fiscal year, the district did not meet the minimum percentage requirement of fifty-five percent. The district spent forty-nine point seventy-two percent on classroom teacher salaries in the twenty twenty-two to twenty-three fiscal year. And this is mainly due to one-time COVID funds. And you can also see the district's corrective action plan going over that as well. And, um, this should hopefully correct once, you know, those COVID funds are being exhausted and won't have to be included in the audit report. And the next finding is finding number twenty twenty-three, zero zero two, Home and School Transportation was, which was a new area for the twenty twenty-two to twenty-three fiscal year. And this is outlined on page ninety-three of the audit report. And in summary, we issued a finding because the district did not develop and adopt a plan on it before April one, twenty twenty-three, as required by Education Code. And there are question costs related to this finding, which is basically just the entire amount of the award, um, which is roughly ninety thousand. And you can see the district's corrective action plan on the bottom. And also, you can also see all the other criteria we had to disclose as part of the, um, report writing process of writing up this finding. And the last finding, number twenty twenty-three, zero zero three, Ratio of Administrative Employees to Teachers, which is outlined on page ninety-four of the audit report. And in summary, the district had two hundred and forty-eight point twenty-one F T for teachers based on allowable ratio for unified districts of zero point zero eight. And the district must have had less than nineteen point eighty-six F T related to non-exempt certificated administrative employees. The district had twenty-two F T for non-exempt administrative certificated employees representing an excess of two point fourteen F T. And the excess F T does lead to question costs, which is about roughly thirty-five thousand, as you can see, um, on that calculation right there. And the district's corrective action plan is included at the bottom and also just mainly due to one-time impacts of COVID funding. Um, and those are the three findings that we issued in the audit report. I wouldn't say anything too severe, just minor findings. Uh, we still issued an unmodified opinion in relation to state, in relation to state compliance. Um, and we also issued a modified opinion in relation to federal compliance and, and the financial statements. And that concludes this portion of the presentation. Um, any questions before I move on to the bonds?
Yeah, I, I had a question, is that a?
Okay, or do you want to wait for him to do the next one and then you?
That's a different one.
There's separate, separate agenda.
And we, we have to approve this, right?
Yeah, well, it's acceptance.
Acceptance.
Okay, go ahead.
So on, on page eighty, as you pointed out, um, you say you do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the district's internal control. And I'm just wondering, does that, um, have an impact on the validation of the audit report by not expressing an opinion on that? Is there, and why, why are we not expressing opinions?
Yeah, good question. So, um, we're just required to express an opinion on the presentation of the financial statements and whether they're being correctly, um, reported to the user of the financial statements. But if there was something significant related to internal controls, then we would disclose that in the audit report. So for example, let's say that there's not proper procedures in place when it comes to recording accounts payable, recording accounts payable or accounts receivable, then that will lead to internal control finding. So there would be something included in the audit report when it comes to a internal, something related to internal control that might be significant.
So because we didn't have anything that you found, you have no need to express the opinion?
Well, we're not required to, um, based on the audit report. We just need to express an opinion on the financial statements. But if there, like I mentioned, was something significant, then we would disclose the finding. But we only disclose a finding on the presentation of the financial balances that are included in the audit report.
So, uh, this is a pretty typical thing with auditors. They'll, so for instance, if there's a deficiency in internal controls, you would, you would find it, like there's, there'd be some sort of situation where an auditor would then express a finding and say, hey, uh, you have issues with internal controls about accounts payable or accounts receivable. But since there are any in this case, um, they're, they wouldn't express, like, for example, is your, are your internal controls efficient? Are they the most efficient? They're not expressing that, but they are expressing if it's deficient.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions before we go to the next one? Yes.
One question, are there any kind of penalties or what have you when you, uh, when this happens, when you have like forty-nine point two percent when you're being fifty-five percent? Is there any, even though you say you can justify it, I do believe that this was the case last year, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And.
And really what happens is a lot of districts in the state of California actually are dealing with this finding, uh, related to classroom teacher salaries. And so for us, um, what we did last year, we filed a waiver with the Los Angeles County Office of Education. They approved it. And because they are aware of the situation, what happens is because we received an influx of one-time dollars, it kind of throws off the calculation, it's kind of out of whack in that sense because now you're expending those on other items outside of teacher salaries or an extra hours that wouldn't count towards salaries. And so what ends up happening is, um, it throws off that percentage. But, you know, Laco's aware of that, it's, there's various districts that are doing the same thing. And so we filed this waiver. And now that this is the last year for our COVID funds, um, and, uh, so we shouldn't really see that hopefully in the future, um, but that's, that's what we would do. So there's no, no penalty associated with that at this time.
Is that it? Okay, without, with further questions, we'll go to the next presentation.
All right, let me go ahead and share my screen.
All right, how does that look on your end?
It looks good, thank you.
All right, perfect. All right, so, um, I'll be covering the Measure E and B H Bond Building Fund, which is just the district's Fund Twenty-One, not, not including the non-prop thirty-nine funds. And this is, we're just looking at Fund Twenty-One, right? We're not looking at Fund One, Fund Thirteen. So I'll just be covering the financial audit presentation aspect. Um, there's also the performance audit that's included with Measure E and B H, but that will be covered by Moss Adams afterwards. All right, so little summary of the financial audit objectives. I kind of touched based on this a little bit on the presentation that I did for the district audit. And, um, pretty similar objectives. And we're also just verifying account balances. And if there's any findings that we disclosed in the audit report for the district, this will also roll over to the bond audit, right? Because Fund Twenty-One is included in the district audit as well. So you could already assume that there was no findings. So you could already assume that there was no findings that we had to disclose in the audit report for the bond report. And so the financial statement audit is the examination of an entity's financial statements and accompanying disclosures by independent auditor. And the results of this examination is a report by the auditor attesting to the fairness of presentation of the financial statements and related disclosures. The auditor's report must accompany the financial statements when issued to the intended recipients. And like I mentioned, we're only issuing an opinion on Measure E and BH Bond Building Funds. So a little recap of our procedures that we did when it came to the Bond Building Fund. So for cash, we're reviewing county treasury records to confirm accuracy. For accounts receivable, we're confirming account balances. This mainly relates to interest earned on the cash in the county treasury and we're investigating subsequent collections to see if there's anything going on there. But usually, the only thing that we see when it comes to accounts receivable for bonds is just mainly interest earned. There's nothing other than that for the most part. And for accounts payable, we're confirming accrued invoice amounts. And we're also testing year-end cutoff to determine if there are any unrecorded amounts. So after the books close, we're selecting a sample of expenditures and seeing if those expenditures relate to the 2022-23 fiscal year because if they did, then they should be accrued for. So then we're verifying if there were any warrants after that fiscal year or after the books close, making sure that those are accrued for. Because if they're not accrued for, then we'll have to propose an adjustment and book an adjustment in the audit report. So that's a big test that we do because we want to make sure that accounts payable is properly booked. And this is a very risky area. And for revenue, we're testing only interest revenue. There's nothing really significant other than interest revenue. And for expenditures, we're examining documents supporting a selection of expenditures. There's also a lot of stuff that you have to do. They can take expenditures when it comes to the performance audit, but that's something that Moss Adams will be covering. And we're also verifying just the existence of these expenditures, verifying that they exist. And in page two, under opinion in the report, we issued our opinion. In our opinion, the financial statement is referred to present verity in all material respects, the respective financial position of the Bond Building Funds of Beverly Hills Unified School District as of June 30, 2023, and the respective changes in financial position for the year that ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So we didn't note any misstatements or overstatements in any of the account balances. Everything was fairly presented and nothing was being overstated or missed, like I mentioned. And that concludes the presentation for this one, a pretty short one since it's a small recap of just the financial statement audit. And there's just much more detail when it comes to the performance audit related to the bond testing. Any questions on this one?
Any questions? No questions?
Well, just real quick, then, I just wanted to thank you again, Jesus. He covered both of the audits. We were really happy with the results. I think, you know, very clean. And it's always good. We want to continue to have these type of clean audits. Thank you very much, Jesus. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, are you making further commentary?
All right, and then the next audit is going to be by, next presentation is by Mr. Stephen Bicchetti, who's here today. I'm going to display on the screen as he speaks, but I'll go ahead and present him and want to thank him for his support. When I first got here, I want to say one of the persons that I relied on most to try to kind of make sure we orient ourselves with, you know, construction and figure out what's going on with our program with Stephen. And he really helped us tremendously. You know, he's a true asset, and I'm just so thankful that, you know, more so than even just auditing, it's just been really, really important to be part of the team. He's been really helpful to Fonder Solari, to Will, to myself. So can't express enough how thankful we are for him. But I'll go ahead and let him present now. So thank you.
All right. Good afternoon or good evening. I did not pay Rafael to say that. So it's good to see everyone in person. I've been here December and January, and I still don't believe California has weather. That's, it's always beautiful and perfect here. So today, my name is Steve Bicchetti. My partner, Moss Adams, I lead our construction advisory team. Today, we'll be going over the Measure E, Measure BH Bond Programs, the state constitution and Education Code. And you probably can just go to the implementation plan at the very end and then don't focus on the report. I'll just kind of give an overview and we'll go over kind of the good news. I'm very excited to present tonight. So state constitution, the Education Code requires an annual performance audit. The minimum requirement for these audits is validating that the expenditures line up with the listed projects in the ballot program. As a great practice, the district does expanded performance audit procedures surrounding reporting, bid and procurement, master planning, bond transparency, in alignment with KBOC, which is the California Association of Bond Oversight Committee. Not all districts do it. Actually, very few select do. So it's a great practice that you guys perform that all. Based off the minimum, or, and then before I get into the audit findings, I just want to thank Rafael and team just to, there's been a lot of transition at Beverly Hills. I've been here for seven years. I've seen it go from Totum, the Team Concepts, to Fonder Solari. So the team at Fonder Solari, whether they knew it or not, they practically spent a lot of time with me trying to understand what the previous findings were, how do they correct it? Which was best practice. We do a lot of these types of programs. Some people aren't as receptive to it. So just a big shout out and thank you to them for immediately, I don't know if it was day one or week one, but they want to cover the audit. We did a couple of meetings. They really wanted to go into the details on how do they correct it to clear the findings, which is what we noted in the report, that they were extremely diligent in collaboration with Rafael, Will, and Ken in terms of correcting some of the open issues. Just from a historical standpoint, when we started these seven years ago, the total audit findings were 24, which is quite amazing. We're down to four. They were able to close effectively two. And when we go to the implementation plan, you'll see that the remaining observations are extremely digestible. And I think some of the higher-risk areas that were identified previously were taken care of, which is great. And then just other things we've noticed with good practices is proactiveness, good collaboration and teamwork with the Fonder Solari and Beverly Hills team. We just see open communication, a lot of teamwork. So I think you guys have a really good team based off my opinion, which is out of scope. But I just see a lot of proactiveness and desire to finish the program, implement best practices, and finish the projects. And I think it's been evident, some of the, when we were back here in December, we did a walkthrough of Beverly Hills High and El Rodeo. And the progress scene there is amazing. Sometimes I forget I'm at a school. So it's really exciting to see it all come together and see some of those projects finally be complete and opened up. So into the meat of the audit report, based off the minimum standards of evaluating expenditures, we evaluated 85 expenditures totaling $63 million. The total population was 74 million. So we audited about 85% of the cost. There was no exceptions in terms of the expenditures, meaning the compliance of the minimum reporting standards that the invoices equaled the listed projects on the program. If we go into the implementation plan, I know it's really small, but I can speak to each of them. The first one is based off the expenditure and payment procedures. This is an ongoing finding where you had two payments that exceeded the 30-day threshold. They were both for a professional service firm, which has a 45-day requirement, but the policy states 30. So you were in compliance with Public Contracting Code, but as a best practice, the 30-day requirement was not met. This, I mean, when we do this for any organization in California, it's almost impossible to get 100%, especially if we're doing 85 samples. So I think the overages were within a day or two, so nothing significant. So great job. The second piece is conducting the construction audit, which is an ongoing process. Fonder Solari noted that they are collecting all the sub-lease releases, but the monthly payment application still lacked the monthly substantiation that we'd expect based off a GMP contract with cost of work definitions. But the district is conducting and being proactive on the construction audits or equivalent procedures. For the items that were closed, district staffing, you guys finally have a budget for the total staffing plan, which is a great. So that was able to be closed. And then in terms of reporting, you guys were able to include change orders, forecast, schedule, all the minimum requirements we'd expect within the GFOA. So that's two, which are knocked out. For the procurement fraud and prevention, we noted that you did conduct training, which is great. You guys did develop a consolidated procurement activity report, which is just a consolidated summary of all the procurement that's going on, the testing attributes that would meet the requirements of Public Contracting Code in the district. So when we go to the responses, which is on this field, it's been proactively developed, or it was developed last fiscal year, but they're going to have it as a readily available product starting in March 2024. And then the final one, which is a small nuance, but, Rodders, we have to say something. For the master planning product that was presented to you all, which included all the required KPIs that we would expect, lacked cash flow reporting, but this cash flow reporting was in the monthly reporting. So you can see the schedule, the forecast, the cash flow reporting and the monthly reporting, but it wasn't in the master plan reporting. So based off all the procedures that we were doing, these were the final four of the performance audit. And yeah, just a great job to the team here for all the proactiveness. You guys got in on day one, really wanted to understand how to resolve some of these issues. And I think it's evident that they were able to take care of some of these issues that had been lingering for years, and they were able to knock it out within the first year of being here. And with that, I will open it up for questions or concerns.
Noah, Ms. Wells?
Well, I want to thank you very much and thank Fonder Solari and Rafael and your team for making such strides and what you inherited when you got here. So I really appreciate that. I'm happy to see that there's been progress in these areas. I'm still always concerned about 4C and having that backup in that area. But I think that's still something we've inherited. And so there's only so much that you can do there. But I'm very pleased with all the progress that we've had. So thanks. We're in good hands going forward.
Agreed. Thank you, everyone, for your time and for your care and for the acknowledgement. I think it's great for our community to hear that you agree that what's going on is really good and you can see the difference in person and on the computer.
I'd like to just echo the words that Mrs. Manichieri said. I'm thrilled to see that there's so much progress and that the comfort level you have working with Fonder Solari on doing this is, I think you can feel the cooperation to get this done. So thank you very much.
Yep.
I feel the same way. There's been a lot of good communication. And I thank Mr. Guzman, and I thank Fonder Solari and everyone involved in the construction. And thank you for your findings. It sounds really good.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Approval or accepted, so.
Do we still move to accept, though?
Why not?
Or I would just, I will say, well, no, we have to move because it's a board action. So I'll move to accept items 13A, B, and C, the district audit, the Measure E and BH Financial, the Measure E and BH Performance Audit.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving along to planning and facilities. Can I get a motion for the approval of installation services for non-cooperative furniture? Sorry, that sounds really funny.
I'll move for the approval of installation services for the non-cooperative furniture fixtures and equipment by New Tangram Limited Law Corporation, doing business as Tangram at El Rodeo Elementary School.
I'll second.
Okay, motion carries?
I have one question. Why are they called non-cooperative furniture? Can anybody shed light on why it's non-cooperative? It's not supposed to say that?
I think it misses an agreement after that cooperative. Basically, these are the, we had, we previously brought in front of the board a list of furniture that has cooperative agreements. That's our technically estate improvement of procurement. This portion of the work is for installation only of whatever furniture that is not covered under that agreement. So after the cooperative, even agreement is missing in that title. So they are very cooperative company and very cooperative furniture, so.
That sounds really dangerous. I don't want to sit on a chair that's non-cooperative.
Colleagues, as per Ms. Manichieri's suggestion, are there any other items under 14, and I know we pulled 14F, that you would like to address individually? Otherwise, we can approve this almost like a consent calendar. Unless you have specific questions on a specific item, speak now. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve everything.
Can you give me a sec? A second?
I will give you a second.
To look at them?
We'll be saving time anyway. Take your second.
I agree with you.
Are you voting separately on A or are you going to put it together?
No, we still have to vote on that. We didn't vote on it, on A.
On A, okay. Wait, for 13A or?
14A.
Okay, yeah, 14, okay.
Let's take a vote on that and then move on to the others.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, I don't think we've had a motion yet.
I did, we did. You made the motion.
I'll second.
No, Ms. Marcus made the motion. I made the second for 14A.
Okay.
So let's just address 14A. Any other questions on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's take this vote and then we'll get to that.
Okay.
So yes, aye on 14A.
Okay, opposed?
Okay. So.
Ms. Wells?
There we go. You want to pull out J. You got it. Okay. Okay, yeah, but we're pulling out F.
Right.
When we approved the agenda, Mandy pulled F. Okay, I will make a motion to approve 14B, the lease agreement renewal for Procore. 14C, the approval of change order for AMS. 14D, the approval of the agreement for design and playground area and shade for Horseman. 14E, the approval of the agreement with Garza for the interior wall demolition. 14G, the award and approval of Cow Shave Implementation Services. 14H, the approval of Amendment Number Four to the Agreement of Environmental Audit. And 14I, the approval of change order number three with Kazoni for the construction of BV.
I'll second.
Mary pulled it.
She pulled it. Okay. Do we vote on that?
We can vote on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Coming to communication from the board.
14J.
I thought we, oh, we pulled it. Okay, so.
F, no, F was pulled off the agenda.
Yeah.
By Dr. Stern. I'll make a motion for the ratification of the agreement with Triangle Enterprise for soil importation at the high school of Venico Oil Site. Thank you.
I just thought this was important to highlight because I really feel that this is a result of the good work that Fonder Solari and our team with Will and with Rafael have done to really find a way for us to finish the high school with the dollars that we have. And this has really been part of that. And it's such a great success. And I think it'd be great for you to just talk about that.
Okay, I'll start and then Amin, if you have any other details to add. So one, obviously, we need a lot of dirt at the cell site where our Venico site was and where our future parking lot will be. So with that in mind, we've been putting our feelers out to try to find anywhere or any area close to us that has dirt that they'd like to get rid of. We tried a few local projects. We weren't successful with those. But Amin and his team were able to reach out to some partners at LAX and the projects that are going on there. And they happen to have about 2,700 cubic yards of dirt they wanted to get rid of. We were under a tight timeline to do it, so we had to move pretty quickly because they needed to get rid of it. But Amin and his team were able to do that, and that's what we're bringing to you here today. It's going to save us a lot on the soil import.
They also have my luggage there from my vacation, but did you ask them about?
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
Did you see a blue?
Yeah.
Serious. My son left it.
So this item is to approve the actual, just the transportation of it to come here.
Right, but I mean, it's really quite a savings, just the whole situation with the Venico site and not just with the, having the clean dirt, but.
I just want to clarify, the cost is only for handling the dirt here at the site. I just want to clarify, the cost is only for handling the dirt here at the site. So we got the dirt for free and the dirt was delivered to the site for free. So we didn't pay anything for transportation. We had like two and a half full days of operation, about like 20 trucks almost every day on average. So we didn't pay for the dirt and we didn't pay for transportation. This $20,000 for for was just for a company to receive. They need to handle the dirt, street cleaning when the trucks were done and also push the dirt around so we are not basically creating blockage when the trucks are coming in.
It's a dirty business.
It is, actually.
And how much do you estimate that we were able to save by finding the dirt and also not having to to demo the the concrete in all of that area?
Oh, well, for the dirt part, it's hard to say. Again, it depends on the location. I want to say like around maybe $200,000 that we had to pay if we wanted to just get for not demolition of the concrete and just leave it as is and bag fill. If I remember correctly, it's $1.1 million.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing it.
They delivered the dirt, they delivered the dirt, we got the dirt for free and they delivered the dirt for free?
Yes, because they were working against another deadline that if they wouldn't get it off the dirt, they had to pay liquidated damages to LAX, so.
Good old LAX.
That would be, those savings would be passed on to us from LAX already at parking. This always was a game about DTSC and dirt, so I really appreciate us getting right into the middle of that issue by not only getting the dirt, but getting clean dirt because we knew that was an issue as well. So it's this is an appreciated effort.
And the dirt was tested actually in two different occasions. They DTSC first, they had, they defined a guideline for us and they said, oops, we consider LAX an industrial area, so additional testing is required. So we all these dirt that came to the site, I'm assuming is even cleaner than the floor of my house because it's tested like about 20 times.
I'm not going to comment on that.
Well, I really appreciate it. It was a major concern before when we were talking about when we were not going to be able to finish. So this is just great news and I think it's always worth taking the time to celebrate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Glad I made it through TSA as well because I I've had a lot of trouble getting through TSA too, so that's all good. Moving to meeting or communication from the board members. Oh. Okay, so we're voting on 14J, correct? Okay. I move for the approval of ratification of, oh, already.
We got that.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication from the board members.
Do you have anything else?
Okay, Noah?
I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting last week and just wanted to bring to everybody's attention Kindness Week is coming up, February 11th through the 17th. There are a host of activities going on, starting with the Kindness Week kickoff at the farmer's market on Sunday, the 11th. They're doing a donation, citywide donation drive. There's a bunch of details on this. These cards are around. I know that I know there's a stack of them in my house, but you can go on, oh, yeah, Beverlyhills.org backslash Kindness Week for information. So that is going on there. And I gave my second report that Commissioner Kraushauer can say is these impressive PowerPoint presentations that are just livening up the whole thing. My PowerPoint skills, I was going to brag to Ms. Starkins today, but she's not here, but my PowerPoint skills are becoming unsurpassed.
They're lovely canvas presentations in all the correct colors and.
And fonts, so I don't have Australian hunting me down and yelling at me. Alpha slab one all the way, baby. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I attended the CBOC meeting just this past Thursday and it was a great meeting. The CBOC group has really appreciates all the work that's being done and really sees the difference in transparency and really being able to understand the numbers and have their questions answered on the spot and feeling very satisfied with any question they ask and is and is answered. So that's really great to see. They made a great suggestion this week in light of the fact that the the audit reports were coming out this week, that they would, first of all, they moved up already their date for when they would do their CBOC report. But in addition to that, they talked about the possibility that they would move it up even further next year so that when the audit report is presented to the board, the CBOC would do their their report at the same time, which I thought was a great idea as well. So we may see that next year.
Thank you. I also attended the CBOC meeting this week and I just wanted to make a notation. One of our CBOC members is an auditor and a CPA and she was just so impressed by the progress that our district has made in the last year. She was just blown away by it. And I remember her a year ago asking a lot of questions for backup documentation and I just commend our district. You know, Raphael, Will and the Fonder Solari team, you know, the materials that are being presented in such a digestible way to the CBOC, the questions that are answered were just incredible and so professional and I'm thankful to all of you. And, you know, I'm happy for our community that we really have a bond oversight committee that's being proffered, you know, the information that they should be getting to advocate for our community. So thank you for making that happen. In addition, today I joined the Rexon Parks Commission for their meeting, which I actually had so much fun with them. We always do. They're a really great bunch. And, you know, we've got a couple of BHUSD parents on there. We have a former board member on there. And, you know, it was easy for me to be there because I had so much good stuff to share with them. Today I shared with them especially Mr. Ellis, thank you for all of your hard work because, you know, they were pleased to hear that our soccer team, boys and girls, are first place so far in Ocean League, you know, so on and so forth. So for them, that's very exciting and they're so enthused about everything that's going on at BHUSD. And, you know, one even commented, you guys are really dotting your i's and crossing your t's. And so, you know, that's that's the perception and it's because so many people work so hard. And hopefully this is just the beginning of more of that. So thank you to my colleagues and thank you to Dr. Brighi, you and your cabinet and, you know, all of our our staff and employees for that.
Well, on December 18th, and it's quite a while ago, but because of the change in the our board and our reorganization, I never got a chance to report on it. I attend the Health and Safety Commission and they presented our school district with a recognition for our effort in enhancing the health and safety of the city of Beverly Hills. I was given this doc certificate on the 18th day of December and so I'm presenting it to, they told me to present it to the school district, so I am presenting it to Dr. Brighi and to the president. And in addition, I would like to report that their their change in their reorganization, Dr. Erica Felzenthal is now the new chair and Helena Rosenthal is the vice chair. They recognize Lee Hilborn, who was the outgoing chair for all of his work and the things that he accomplished during his year in the chair seat. Erica Felzenthal's remarks were wonderful and one of the things that she is really interested, she wants to optimize the focus on mental and physical health and she really wants to bring the school district into that venture. And she listed several other items of interest, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to go over them. One item of note, however, that was brought out in a report that was there, it was from the greenhouse gas mitigation measure that they are trying to reduce the greenhouse gases in the community. And they would like to coordinate that with the schools also in a program. And one of the programs that they talked about was something called the Windbrand Dynamics Composting Organization that goes around and does things with the schools. And I think we need to look into that. I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for the kids in the lower grade for composting and learning about how that will reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. So that that is going to be a very important thing. They mentioned the Kindness Week also, and I'm not going to talk about that. Generally speaking, they have three criteria, three organizations that present their reports, the police, the school and the fire department. But this particular last last night, when I was there, they had another one on from Shawna Epstein, who is the head of the Public Works. And one of the things that she was talking about is the new rates for the water and waste removal. And the interesting thing that I, there's going to be a town hall. If you haven't gotten something in the mail already, you can go, it's on February 1st to discuss the rate increase and who will be affected. And it was interesting that people like me, the homeowner, a little home is going to be more affected than the big hotels. I don't understand that, but I'm going to try and figure that out. Then they had a presentation by a gentleman on genetic testing and from Quest Diagnosis, understanding how it can reduce stress. And it was basically to talk about identifying illnesses and problems that would come from ancestry. There was a demonstration of using Narcan by the Beverly Hills CPR. And there was a presentation by the fire department about seasonal respiratory illnesses. And then last night, after I came home from that meeting, I went to the LOCSA meeting and that they did a quite took a amount of time to pass some bylaws, but then they finally got down to what the e-presentation was about and it was about artificial intelligence. They had three speakers from the field speaking to us. And and I have to tell you, I have a hard time following that because I don't understand AI very well. I don't understand chat GPT. And all I can tell you is they were talking about evaluating ethics policies, identifying applications and tools of it. So I'm just going to leave it at that because I had a hard time following it.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you, Rochelle. AI really isn't going anywhere, so it's just something we're going to have to navigate and.
I know we're going to have to put up with it, but I, you know, I'm I'm not, I won't talk about my age, but that's something that at this point in my life, I'm not sure that I'm interested in AI. And I know we're going to be, we face it here in the school and what it can do and so on.
Right.
You're going to be using it in like a week.
Huh?
You'll be using it in about a week. Yeah, you're pretty adaptable.
Yeah, well, I'll put I'll put jet chat GPT on your phone if you'd like. It's free. Kids love it.
Kids love it.
Yeah, they do. As a matter of fact, you know, as I say, one of the one of the ways I use chat GPT is I will say to it, create a story, can you create a story of a fourth grader who is playing soccer and it's winter time? Like that, it generates a whole story and I give it to a kid to read who it's relevant for.
Does he claim that's his own or no?
No, no, no. No, but the point is is that it has this algorithm that's incredible and it can adapt within seconds to a certain parameters. So something like that. But yes, there's problems with with people stealing the ideas, but I love it. It's fun. I just wanted to commend Dustin Seaman further because he did mention, and I think that sometimes math is a bad word. And I think a lot of people don't want to talk about math. Sometimes it puts me in a bad mood. If we talk about mortgages at my house, I get in a very bad mood. But he recently shared with us that the BHUSD elementary math leadership is continuing to grow. The team is completing their training in the pedagogy of cognitively guided instruction in February. You said a second cohort will be trained in June, a final cohort in fall 2024. And this also is along with Dr. Michael Sherman, Maggie Mayberry, Kelly Scon, teachers from BBMS and BHHS. So I think that's, I think that's great because math is something that many students and adults, you know, across the globe struggle with, but it's something that we, I feel we really need to keep putting in some some good time. And it starts with our adults, our teachers, our parents and understanding it and understanding the data of how we're doing and where we need to go. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mandy.
Okay, thank you. With that, our meeting is adjourned.
That was long, but necessary. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Dustin, Dustin, are you going for drinks or to bed?
Thank you all.
Do a nap.
Is that taken out?